Welcome to the March, March, May 7th, 2019 City Council Meeting. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Here.
Councilmember Reddick?
Here.
Councilmember Penrose?
Here.
Vice Mayor Eisen?
Here.
Mayor Marbach?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Pledge of Allegiance. I want to welcome Councilmembers Eisen and Penrose, who weren't here last time. And Councilmember Penrose is recovering, she tells me, and I'm delighted to hear that. Public forum, I have three speakers. Anybody who wants to say anything that's not on tonight's very long agenda is welcome to give a blue card. We'll start with Joaquin Jimenez, followed by Smitha. I don't want to pronounce, I'll butcher your name, but Smitha knows who she is.
Last weekend, Saturday, we had an event here in Half Moon Bay. You know, and for the last few years, it's something I've been bringing up to a meeting, you know, some of the presentations, events that we had, is one of my passions. You know, one of my passions is about building community, about being inclusive, about sharing what I know, what I have, what we have here in our community. You know, that's one of my passions. I have several passions, but that's one of them. That event right there, you know, that's what it is, you know, to make sure, you know, that we share better over culture. Worked here about Cinco de Mayo. But with that, you know, recently I received an email about a new program, something that's going to be implemented here in San Mateo County. And that's about the license plate readers. I don't know if you're familiar with it. I just became familiar with it, now you've received an email. And I'm not happy about it, you know. I'm not, I'm actually concerned.
Well, Joaquin, I appreciate it, but that's an agenda item.
Oh, it is?
Yes. So, why don't you sit down and at the appropriate time, get your behind up here and tell us why you're unhappy, okay?
Oh, well, especially on the agenda, even better.
Yeah, it's on the agenda. It's on the agenda.
All right, I'll come back.
Okay. So, Smitha, followed by Jules Sulfur.
Good evening, honorable members of the City Council and Half Moon Bay community. On behalf of the Youth Leadership Institute and the Coastside Youth Council, which is our group at Half Moon Bay High School, we wanted to present to you some of the findings from our town hall last month. On April 23rd, we heard, we held a town hall for Half Moon Bay community to talk about youth mental health and substance use, as well as to share info to hear community feedback on Measure GG. The town hall consisted of a presentation on mental health, on youth mental health, a panel with representation from the community, the Coastside Clinic, and the Half Moon Bay High School Health and Wellness Committee. About 40 members of the community attended. They had a lot to say about what youth mental health and mental health resources looked like in HMV. We will not take time tonight to read all of the feedback, but we wanted to highlight some key insights, recurring themes and comments, as well as opportunities. Here's what they had to say about youth mental health and substance youth in Half Moon Bay. The consensus was that there are not enough mental health services, especially because of the existing services are not necessarily culturally informed or accessible. And also, the need for teacher and adult allies to be trained on mental health. A recent incident at Teller Cityos Alternative High School where authorities were called on a student going through a mental health crisis highlights the needs for better training for adults. Also, the need for more knowledge of free and confidential resources, though it may be possible to receive medical help based on services through private providers in Half Moon Bay. Navigating this process is confusing for community members, let alone the youth. Also, school-based resources aren't necessarily useful to youth as their setup. Even if they exist, for instance, the intent of the Peer Helpers Program at the Half Moon Bay High School is largely misunderstood and that the program isn't properly utilized. Lastly, the need for stigma reduction for parents and Half Moon Bay community at large. Here's what they had to say about Measure GG. Several community members expressed that they did not want the city to pass any more cannabis ordinances beyond Measure GG. They wanted their fellow community members to be able to get the medicine they need and grow crops for their livelihood, but they want these crops, but they want these to be crops we feel good about. They shared the city-wide cannabis activities cannot be neutral because they normalize the presence of cannabis, which in turn decreases, distorts the perception of harm of cannabis. Though voters passed Measure GG, there was not a lot of voter awareness prior to election unless they had a vested interest in the cannabis issue. The outcome of a yes or no vote did not capture the full range of nuance of sentiments around cannabis in Half Moon Bay. There is a need for larger community education around cannabis, not just to notify job applicants of risks. The Trump administration released an open letter to immigrants recently stating that those involved in cannabis activities would be vulnerable to deportation. So, the feedback that we gathered at this town hall is just a cross-section of the thoughts and ideas of the larger community. We hope to have consistent community input and involvement at every step of the implementation process for Measure GG, as well as community voice in informing the mental health services that are needed and how existing services can be improved or made more accessible. During the town hall, Matthew Chittister actually shared with us that there are opportunities, if this is something that matters to the community, which we saw at the town hall, for the city of Half Moon Bay to seek additional funding to support youth mental health. We hope to keep this conversation about funding opportunities open going forward and to partner with the city to help facilitate these community input processes, as well as to raise awareness. Thank you.
Thank you, Smitha. Yeah, we're going to definitely work with YOI and anybody else from the high school who wants to learn more about what we're all about and to improve our community. So, thank you very much.
Good evening, members of the council. I'm Jules Sulfur, 536 Poplar Street. I want to address the council about a thought that I had on the Poplar Gateway Project. I won't be here this summer, so probably that's the time you're going to be getting into it, so I did want to put it forward and I thought this would be a good opportunity. On the Gateway Project, there's an idea that they're going to move the horse trailer parking from the south side of Poplar to the north side. So, thank you. So, I took a look at that and then I went down to Kelly Avenue. And I noticed that the new descent for the horses is about 75 yards from the end of Kelly Avenue. And the city has a lot of property down there at the end of Kelly Avenue. They also have the old Smith Ambrosi lot. And I was thinking that it made more sense, instead of sending the horses all the way from Poplar down to that spot where they're going to descend to the beach and then back up again when they're done, it makes more sense to build a horse trailer. If you're going to do that, I'm not convinced you need to move the horse trailer parking, but if you do, then you might want to at least consider putting it down there at the end of Kelly, where it would do less damage to the bluff tops. And that was the comment I just wanted to throw out to you.
Thank you, Jules. That's an interesting idea. We now come to mayor's announcements of community activities and community services. I don't have any. Oh, and I skipped over the proclamations and presentations, forgive me. MidCoast Community Council, Claire Tutan, is going to tell us what's going on in the MCC.
Is this about right? Okay. Claire Tutan, Chair of MidCoast Community Council. I think the best way to let you know what we've been doing the last month is to read our brief letter here that we're going to vote on on Wednesday. It says, "In response to the Tom Lantos Tunnel closure and related events of March 12th, the MidCoast Community Council held a series of three meetings investigating the reasons for the lengthy closure and the lack of communication out to the community during the event. We appreciated the attendance of representatives of the California Highway Patrol, Caltrans, San Mateo County Sheriff, the Office of Emergency Services, and the Coastside Emergency Corps. In this letter, we focus not on the details of the events, but on our overall areas of concern. The closure was not associated with a large-scale disaster with attendant life-threatening incidents and large-scale physical damage. It did, however, highlight specific concerns that should receive priority attention. First, commitment to provide a power source that could ensure minimal disruption of service, such as a battery generator or redundant power supply to the tunnel. Then, understanding of the fact that there are only two major entrances and exits to the coast side in an effort to keep at least one road open at all times. Communication out to the community through SMC Alert System for any disruption longer than an hour, and ongoing alerts until the issue is resolved," and they actually have been doing that. "Addressing the duplication of technical communication and operational division processes between the tunnel or any other closure site in the Caltrans Oakland headquarters. And the need for," oh, let's do more things. "clear lines of direct communication between the onsite operations and emergency communication services, and the need for comprehensive and well-publicized emergency plans for the coast side, especially regarding evacuation. We expect that these changes will be made to prevent similar event from occurring in the future, and to ensure that the community and the agencies that control infrastructure and safety in the area are prepared should a larger scale emergency arise." So, that's what we've been up to.
Thank you, Claire. I will see you tomorrow night at the MCC meeting. We have things to talk about, emergency preparedness. Because of the interest in Item 3F, the Automated License Reader Program, and because it's going to be a long night, and right now it's scheduled to be the last item, I'm going to change the agenda so that Item 3F, the Automated License Reader Proposal, will come after Item 3B, the Poplar Complete Streets Program. So, those of you who want to talk about Automated License Readers, be prepared, we're changing the order slightly. I'm now going to defer to our City Council, City Attorney, to report out from our recent closed session meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the council met this evening to discuss two items in closed session. There's no reportable actions, but I did want to list out the items. The first was related to existing litigation in the case entitled City of Half Moon Bay versus Granada and Montero Districts. This relates to the sewer authority MidCoast Side interpretation of the joint powers agreement. The second, and there's no reportable actions there, the second item discussed was an item regarding significant exposure to litigation, one potential case. Thirdly, I wanted to just report out of discussions regarding the settlement of the litigation City of Half Moon Bay versus CSG Consultants. And I'm pleased to report that that action has been settled and dismissed. The council discussed this item in past closed sessions, but the settlement just most recently became final. And just to refresh your memories about that case, that was a construction defect action that the city filed regarding construction defects that occurred on the bicycle pedestrian trail located on the west side of Highway 1 between Wave Crest and Seymour Street. The final settlement was that the surety in that case, it was named as the defendant, paid the city $279,000. I think I reported that a few, couple months ago. And then most recently, the city settled with CSG Consultants in the amount of $200,000 that was paid to the city. So, that case is now dismissed and final. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Yeah, we're finally getting some of what we're due. Next item is the City Manager Updates to Council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. We have several updates tonight under City Manager Updates. I'll start with the first couple announcements and then I'll turn it over to staff for a handful of items. The first announcement I have is an event that's actually going on right now. As we speak, there is a job fair going on from 6:30 to 8:30, so they're midway through, at La Costa Adult School, just right down the street. So, I just wanted to make that announcement. There's a lot of members of the public in the audience tonight, and we encourage you to stay here for this council meeting. And there's people watching on TV, and we encourage you to watch. But, on the other hand, if this is of interest to you, it is going until 8:30, and we encourage you to attend. There are several agencies and businesses there, and the city, we ourselves, have a table at this event for vacancies that we have at the city. So, that's going on right now. The second announcement I want to make has to do with an item that was before your council a couple of meetings ago, I believe, regarding how we approach collections from Airbnb hosts who use the Airbnb platform. And previously, and for as long as we have been able, and Airbnb has been in business and we were in a position to collect, we have collected transancy occupancy tax ourselves. We have a consultant contractor who does those collections for us, but we were in a position to have an active role in collecting that 12%. It's the same amount that is charged to hotels. They're treated just like a hotel. More recently, the city entered into a contract with Airbnb, so that Airbnb will charge that 12% on, and have that included in their software and the way it's done for the hosts, and then they will make those payments to the city every month. So, we brought that forward to the council, believing that that was a better way to collect, better for us, better for the hosts, easier on Airbnb. And that service began May 1st, so it just began last week. And we understand that Airbnb has done quite a bit of reaching out to their hosts. They have sent letters to individual hosts, letting the hosts know about the change. They've distributed FAQs, so that there's no, you know, to try to avoid any confusion on this change, but it should be pretty seamless for the hosts. And then, we will start receiving those monthly remittances directly from Airbnb. A couple things to note, there is going to be some transition, obviously, the way it's set up. If there was bookings before May 1st, those are still the old way, and so Airbnb hosts are still responsible to pay the city directly for any bookings before May 1st. A lot of people book their stays weeks, months in advance, and so there's a lot of possibility there. So, there'll be some transition there, but any booking after May 1st, the software is the platform set up, so that is taken off the top and then Airbnb pays that to us. If there's, you know, there might be some confusion. If there's any questions, again, I think Airbnb did a pretty good outreach. They have their website, they have the FAQs, they even have a phone number that's available with a specialist who can answer questions, and of course, we'll do the same if anyone wants to call us. We just want a smooth transition, and I think there's general agreement that this is a good, a good move.
Sorry, so in short, this is a big one for me. So, this is going to be more money to the city. It's going to be easier for people to collect the money, or for the city to collect the money, and less work for the hosts. So, it's a win-win-win situation, and I think it's, I'm very excited that this is actually, this is happening. So, thank you.
Thank you. And the third announcement I have has to do with an action that was taken last week, May 2nd, by the Fire District. I think it was a pretty important action, and the city was very supportive of it, so I just wanted to acknowledge it. The Fire District had a special meeting on May 2nd to consider whether or not to sponsor, provide official sponsorship for our local CERT branches 1 and 2, which is basically all of the city and extends substantially beyond the city limits, both north and south. I attended the meeting, as did the mayor, and it was a packed room, and I thought it was just a pretty exciting item and the way public discourse should occur on the coast, in my opinion. It was a pretty positive item, and I just wanted to acknowledge the two ladies that are here today, who really were kind of the engineers or the orchestrators of this effort. They've really taken a lead role in CERT in the time that I've known them. They've really taken a lead role in CERT in the time that I've known them. Maybe they were here before, but I certainly wasn't aware of it. But more recently, Synthony Sherrill and Emily Kim, both sitting in the third row, really just led the charge here, and it was really impressive to see. So at the end of the discussion, the district voted 5 to 0 to support that sponsorship. So really coming at a crucial time. It's a requirement of FEMA that CERTs should be sponsored for them to truly be activated. And then on top of that, more recently, the governor has made funding available to CERTs, but of course, they must be sponsored. So without that sponsorship, our CERT would not even have been eligible. So apparently, those, that grant application is due tomorrow, and so they're not just celebrating or in the glow of this, they're actually still working to get that grant application in so we can get funding on the coast. So, pretty exciting, just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you very much.
And then, the next item, this is where I'll start to turn it over to staff, so this is right on the heels of the CERT getting sponsorship. We did have a Coast Side Preparedness Day this past Saturday, and Cory Stalker is making her way to the podium, and she's going to do a short debrief and show some photos from the event.
All right. Thank you, Bob. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I'm here to give a recap on Coast Side Preparedness Day that we had last Saturday. So, we believe the attendance was somewhere in between 600 to 800 people. We did have about 150 people enter our raffle. We had about 600 churros that were all given away, and 400 sets of tacos that were also given away. So, we used that as a little bit of our metric. And we had CPR training going on. We had our lovely CERT ladies there as well. And along with the Half Moon Bay booth in MacDutra Plaza, we had Keep, KHMB Radio, doing interviews, and our CEC. So, let's see. So we have a few people that came, and they were taught CPR. We had some of the military there. We had our National Guard ambulance, as well as Chad Webber, our old coast side coordinator was there, and he brought his group. We had Smokey the Bear and Captain Lopez on his T-3. We had a great turnout. The weather was beautiful, so we got extremely lucky. We had our Samhain County Harbor. We were represented by numerous groups, Coast Side County Water. We had the HMB Review, the Library. We had PG&E, and Republic Services was there. So we had the raffle at the end, we had one raffle, I'm sorry, at 2 o'clock, and then we had our last raffle at 3 o'clock, where the grand prize was a barbecue. And the lucky winner was, I believe he was about four or five years old, and his parents were thrilled.
I picked the lucky ticket.
You did. So the event went really well, and hopes that we can have it again in the future. The turnout was great, and the weather was awesome. So I want to thank staff, as well as all the wonderful groups that came out to help.
And I second, the staff did a wonderful job. It was a great event.
Yeah, and thank you especially Cory. You did a fabulous job.
Thank you.
Next up, Public Works Director John Doughty on a couple of awards we recently received.
Funny, I thought this was going to be Maz's name on here. So we are pleased to announce that we received two different awards this year from APWA Silicon Valley Chapter. One obvious potential awardee would be the library, so we were awarded the Project of the Year Award, which is really great. And another, which was the Main Street Pedestrian Improvements. And while that's a relatively small in comparison to the library, we think that's been an extremely valuable and safety improvement, and it doesn't pretty much go past a week in which somebody comes in and says, "Thank you for helping us get our kids across the street to La Petite Beline," and also at the high school. So, we're going to be receiving those awards on May 15th in Mountain View, so we'll bring those back and show them off. Thanks.
Next up, Jonathan Royssman, a new program that we're going to be instituting this year.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, and members of the public. We're excited to announce the launch of a new youth program this fall aimed at educating Half Moon Bay's students about local government. The purpose is to introduce the inner workings of local government to students entering 8th through 12th grade this fall, who either live in city limits or attend a school in the Cabrillo Unified School District. Students who sign up for the academy will interact with elected officials and city staff. They'll learn about government and community relations, civic engagement, voter outreach, and participate in a mock city council meeting. The academy will take place over three weeks with the tentative dates and times listed above. Sorry, they're a little small. We're in the outreach stage right now and are working with the high school and while I to get the word out before the current school year ends. And we're working with both groups on creating content for the program, and we have also spoken with our local legislators who are also interested in getting involved. All of this will be capped off with our Second Annual Elections Night Out event on September 24th, which corresponds with National Voter Registration Day. And we'll be enlisting the juniors and seniors from the academy to help plan and execute in our effort to make sure all of Half Moon Bay's 16- and 17-year-olds are pre-registered to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. It sounds wonderful.
Next up, we have a lot going on. Michaela McMahon will come up and make a couple short presentations. One, a brief of Legislative Action Day that occurred a couple weeks ago, and then also a brief on the various Earth Day events that we had a couple weeks ago.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and Half Moon Bay community. On April 24th, Mayor Rarback, Jessica Blair, and I attended the League of California Cities Legislative Action Day. The purpose of Legislative Action Day is to receive a firsthand update on pending legislation, meet with our representatives, and network with other cities. The day began with a budget legislative and policy update from various League California cities' executive staff. League staff included the president, league executive director, and various legislative directors and advocates. We spoke with representatives from the Office of Governor Newsom regarding his proposed budget and housing policy. The representatives were able to stay for a short period to answer any questions that cities had. After the morning session concluded, Jessica and I, along with Alex Gibbs of Townsend Public Affairs, attended Assembly Local Government Committee hearings to hear the bills discussed on the agenda that are on the list for city watch bills. To end the day, the League hosted a panel discussion on addressing California's housing need. Senator Weiner was in attendance to discuss his proposed bill, as well as answer any questions that cities had. Weiner stated California's population has tripled since 1960, while housing production has decreased by 2/3. California's housing deficit is 3.5 million, a total of all the 49 other states combined. Overall, Legislative Action Day was extremely beneficial for the city of Half Moon Bay. We were able to converse and network with other cities, meet various representatives, and share our input on various bills directly. Next, I would like to update the City Council on the city's sustainability efforts. This includes an update on Earth Day's celebration, an upcoming Household Hazardous Waste Event, and a pop-up neighborhood meeting that is occurring this month. On April 19th, the city, along with Republic Services and various local organizations, hosted an Earth Day celebration to provide resources and free services to Half Moon Bay residents. This year, the city expanded this event, adding e-waste, as well as inviting active groups in the Half Moon Bay community to come and share their resources. Above are pictures of different organizations and attendees of the event. So approximately 130 residents use the e-waste and shred services, many use both. The compost always has a steady crowd all day, but we think around 30 to 50 residents brought home compost to use in their gardens or other backyard projects. In addition, around 100 to 150 residents visited the organization's tables, listening to their various programs and sharing tips on sustainable practices that they can use at home. And although we cannot provide exact numbers on how many were in attendance due to the nature of the event, we feel that the event was successful, and we heard from many residents that they're excited to see it expanding and gaining more traction, and we're looking forward to providing many more of these events very soon. An upcoming event is a Household Hazardous Waste Collection Event on June 29th, from 8:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. HHW, which is short for Household Hazardous Waste, is waste from your home that is toxic, flammable, or reactive based on its chemical properties. Example of this include household cleaning chemicals, painting supplies, propane tanks. However, a full list of what is accepted can be found on smchhealth.org. The event is scheduled, but appointments are required due to the nature of the event and therefore necessary for the events to proceed. So we are encouraging residents to reserve their spot if they would like to see this event happen. A sample of the booking page can be found on the slide above. However, if you need any help, they are available at hhw@smcgov.com. You can also call on the number provided above, or I'm happy to answer any questions. Lastly, we have an exciting event coming up on May 23rd. It's a Thursday at 6:30 p.m. We are hosting a neighborhood pop-up meeting to allow residents to share their opinion on a future park upgrade at Frenchman's Creek Park. The consultant that is working on this project, as well as city staff, will be there to showcase the various options of the park design and collect resident input. An updated survey is also available at hmbcity.com/frenchman's creek and is another platform for you to share your input. Please let me know if you have any questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Michaela. Anybody?
I just want to say, that looked like good turnout to me on Earth Day. That's a lot of people, 130 coming down. That's really good. Thanks.
And our final presentation, Jessica Blair will do a general legislative update.
Good evening. There are a few legislative bills that are non-housing that I wanted to make sure the council and public were aware of. First, AB 849 is a redistricting bill that would absolutely change the way that cities and special districts transition to district elections. So it would require us to go through the entire process again in 2021 following the census, and our current map would no longer be valid. It would open the city to a lot of liability and a lot of various other things. It changes the factors that a city can consider when creating their map. It puts them in priority order. The first is to be geographically continuous, contiguous. The second is that communities of interest cannot be split up, so we would have to redo our map in the whole process. I have been speaking with Assembly Member Mullen. He actually signed on as a co-author of this bill in order to keep a seat at the table. So we have been discussing possible amendments that could make this maybe not as impactful to Half Moon Bay and other small cities. Oh, another thing that it would do is take away the ability for a city to redo its map between the census redraws as well. Next is a bill that, just more so to make the public aware of, this would prohibit us from adopting any laws that would regulate or ban the operation of drones. And it has a couple other pieces of it that would be relative to Half Moon Bay, but we'll be watching it, and we'll come back if there's anything of note. And lastly, there is a wastewater treatment bill that our Public Works Director is aware of and watching, and this would require us to reduce our dry weather discharge by 50% by 2030. It mostly has to do with ocean outfalls, but the city has issues with potential costs, technical and land use constraints permitting, and legal hurdles. So Townsend is actually preparing an opposition letter now that staff will send on behalf of the city. And in summary, there are still tons of bills moving around. May 31st is the House of Origin deadline, so we'll know more in the coming weeks about a lot of the bills, and staff will continue to work with the council's legislative subcommittee, and will return to council with anything controversial or relevant for the council's awareness. Thanks.
Just wanted to point out, so the Hertzberg Ocean Outfall Bill has already failed two years in a row, and it made this time too, but I think, I think that's where the state is headed. It's going to take time to get there, but I think we need to be cognizant that state policy is moving in the direction of capturing the water, reusing the water, recycling the water, and not sending it out into the ocean. So we need to start, you know, changing our thinking about that, because one day it's going to pass, so we need to be ready.
Jessica, I think AB 1149, the redistricting bill, 849. What's the likelihood that it will pass as currently constituted?
It's been flying through committee, so I think that it has a very good chance of passing because the intent of it of increasing voter rights and, you know, that's a noble cause, but the impacts to the various agencies is the concern and what we're trying to minimize, so. But it will pass the Assembly floor and go to the Senate, for sure.
Thank you for that update. At least we're in the loop of understanding state legislation that does affect the city, to start.
That concludes the City Manager's Update.
Thank you, staff. Thank you, Bob. Now we come to the consent calendar. Does anyone want to pull anything?
I'm just going to be.
Okay.
I move that we approve the consent calendar. Item 1A, wave readings of resolutions and ordinances. Item 1B, minutes for approval. That would include approved meeting minutes for the January 15th special meeting and regular meeting, the February 5th special meeting and regular meeting, February 19th regular meeting, March 2nd special meeting, March 3rd special meeting, March 5th special meeting, March 7th special meeting, and March 17th special meeting. Item 1C, warrants for the month of March 2019. Item 1D, Third Amendment to Janitorial Maintenance Services Agreement with IMPC Group, Inc. Item 1E, Half Moon Bay Little League Facility Use Agreement for Smith Field. Item 1F, acceptance of public improvements for Phase 2 of the Pacific Ridge subdivision. And Item 1G, Amendment 2 Agreement with Management Partners for Financial Consulting Assistance.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now we come to ordinances and public hearings, and Item 2A is an ordinance amending Chapter 13.04, which is the Water Conservation and Landscaping Regulations. May I have the staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Council. This is a ordinance amendment. Our current ordinance was put in place back in 2010, and back in 2015, the state implemented some changes to the ordinance, to the landscape, the water efficiency landscape requirements, which the city has been in compliance with as far as practice goes. The purpose of the ordinances of the amendment is to basically match what the current practice is today, so. And some of the main changes is that we are now referencing the Model Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance the state has put into place. And the substantive change is that the threshold of applicability is now set at 500 square feet of irrigated landscaping as opposed to 1,000, and there are some other minor changes as well. With that, we would recommend that the City Council conduct a public hearing and introduce the first reading of the draft ordinance. the first reading of the draft ordinance. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
We're opening the public hearing. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak on this proposed ordinance? No? I close the public hearing. Any comments from council?
I'd like to recommend that we read the ordinance. Well then, I'd like to, Ms. Scott, I'd like to approve, I'd like to approve item...
2A.
2A. The first ordinance reading of the resolution.
Water conservation.
The water conservation resolution. Water Conservation Ordinance. No, felt my granicus.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? The ordinance first reading has passed.
Now, we do mean after item 3F.
No, no, not yet. After 3B.
After 3B.
Yeah. We now come to item 3A, Award of Contracts for Half Moon Bay Sewer Collection System Maintenance and Engineering Operations Assistant. John?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Tonight, I'm here to request your approval and authorization to proceed with amendments to three different contracts that are critical to continuing to provide quality collection services in our sewer program. The first one is to approve Amendment Number 1 to the Sewer Collection Agreement with SAM, the Sewer Authority of Midcoast Side, and that would extend a year on that contract. The second is to amend the contract with Mark Thomas Company, which is already a three-year contract, but this would modify slightly the scope of work to recognize and reflect changes that were needed to the FOG, the Fat Soils and Grease Program, and add a small increase in cost there. And then to address extending by an additional year the contract with Howson Associates, who's provided, I think, excellent services, engineering and support services, and who in a prior lifetime served as the interim general manager for SAM. So incredible insights in terms of a lot of issues and things. So I won't go into great detail here. You've seen this slide 63 times maybe or fewer, but I do change it up and change it around. The critical piece is, I think, for the community to understand is that while SAM is something we talk a lot about and hear a lot about and see in the newspaper in various forms and fashions, that is our treatment plant and treatment facility. We, as the city, own and operate a sewer collection system, and those run within the streets of Half Moon Bay and throughout other areas. And that comprised of 35 miles of gravity main lines and three pump stations and three force mains. So this is not a small undertaking on the city's part, and this is pretty a major utility that the city operates and runs. And I think for many years, there wasn't a belief that we didn't operate and maintain and manage that system. It was SAM doing it. SAM is a contractor with us and so in some aspects, and they're also a partner in other aspects. So we have multiple relationships operating. So in a nutshell, this is sort of a different way of showing what the different roles are and what this contract system basically addresses. Namely, it's addressing SAM in the context of the sewer cleaning and our underground service alerts, responses, and markings, and also SSO response. And they've done, I think, an excellent job over the last year doing that. I think with the assistance and with the oversight of Mark Thomas Company, that service has improved substantially. And as a result, we are recommending as part of this project and a part of this program to head to a 50% cleaning rather than a full cleaning of the system based on the documentation and the work that's been done both by SAM and Mark Thomas overviewing. And that was always the plan, and that was always the belief that we could do that. One thing that I'm extremely happy to report, and as of this moment in time, we have not had an SSO sewer spill event since December 1, 2017. It was Night of Lights. I remember it very well. And Night of Lights was great, and then we found out we had an SSO event, but didn't ruin Night of Lights too much. And then also maintaining the pump stations and, again, a combination. So it's a team effort. Our staff has been taking a significantly bigger role in much of the work, always involved with the capital improvements, but we're getting more and more involved in just the operations management. And a couple of meetings ago, you saw the sewer point repair project come through. That's a big improvement for us. We're going to continue to look. If you've noticed, a large truck roaming around the streets this last week or so. We have CCTV, closed caption TV going on, closed cap, anyway, TV, TV, closed circuit TV, sorry, going on in all our hotspots. So that'll be about a three-week project. Mark Thomas Company is doing that work. And they were just at City Hall all day yesterday, working, or most of the day yesterday, and they're working in other areas. So that's exciting. We'll have information and hopefully be able to even look at reducing some of the hotspot cleanings, the more regular cleanings that we have to do in spots that have been historically problems. Excuse me?
Do you have chronos?
Is it? Is it? It's short-term here. So this, again, it's sort of a different reflective of how this relationship is working. Obviously, this current year is the first year in which we have this hybrid model of both having SAM under a new contract, Mark Thomas coming in and providing assistance and oversight, and the city managing two different contractors in light of this. We've learned a lot. We've made adjustments as we've gone along. I think the relationships have been challenged at times, but I think we're growing and basically working to, very much a collaborative. So I think it is a team effort, and it takes all parties to work through this and get along and to recognize that no one person or new one agency has it all the answers. So we're doing, I think, good things. So our objective overall for the system is to basically create a progressive wastewater approach and creating sort of the perfect circle of information feeding, optimizing our work, resulting in less sewer spills, and ultimately, again, planning strategically for capital projects, for point repairs, and all those things, collecting the data, see how we're doing, and it just kind of comes in a complete circle around. I think we've made great strides this last year to start to basically make the circle work. We're working toward that. I think that we're committed, and I believe our other partners, Granada and Montero, as well as SAM, are interested in doing the same. And so we'll continue to partner and collaborate with them as we move along. And I think we're all working toward the circle as well. Some are just a little different place than others, and we'll work our way through that. So again, I'm not going to belabor this. We are asking in this for three different contract changes, and I spoke to those already. Again, SAM, Mark Thomas, and Vivian Howson Associates. Again, I think all three have performed well and at standard or above standard this last year. And such, we would ask that you authorize the city manager to execute amendment, agreements to these agreements and allow us to move forward in 2019, 20. Thank you.
Yeah, we have a question for you, John.
So when we were going through the Mark Thomas piece back before, adding that in, you know, there was the question of how that was going to work and then the extra cost associated with it. But now it seems like we're able to only have to clean 50% moving forward. So just is item number one, the 176,000, less than it was last year, I would assume?
Yes.
Because instead of it being 100% now?
Yes.
So there was significant savings?
Yes.
From the documentation that we did with Mark Thomas?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, this current year, I believe, the SAM was about 305,000, so it's dropping to about 176,000. The Mark Thomas contract is dropping somewhere, I think, around 80, between 80 and 100,000. I can look at the, I can pull it up, but it drops also. But frankly, we continue to do and have maintenance and work with the pump stations, and the FOG program has become a little more involved than what we thought with about five times more businesses than we initially anticipated.
How did that happen? Like, what are all these new, what changed?
How do I do this delicately? We actually started, the consultants started to look and the contracts started to look at all of our building business license and the building permits and activities that are going on, figuring out who's where and what and going. So I think SAM, when we initially did the RFP, we were a little over 20, we thought or so. That ended up about 32 to 35 that was indicated to us. And we're pretty much right around 100, 102 businesses that require the FOG inspections within the city limits. So that was a change. So a lot of the challenges and issues that we've been trying to deal with is simply get our arms around the documentation and information so we can operate and run the program as we need to.
So at the start, our, the Mark Thomas piece, which seems to have gone, again, very well, was for the collection system. That was kind of like the original. Are we using them again just for collection or is there, are you talking about like there's extra scope now for the future years and we can kind of work on other pieces as well? Or just looking for your expertise?
The scope, the Mark Thomas scope remains virtually the same as what they had, what you had approved as part of the three-year contract, which is oversight, QAQC, quality assurance, quality control for SAM's work, documentation, documentation should we have sewer spills, review of the work that's being done in the field as part of sewer responses, various other, also managing and helping to maintain the pump station. So that contract and the scope remains exactly the same as this year. It's just less that we're, work that we're doing in terms of the amount of lines we're doing. Now, the difference is a small change in the scope, which reflects the larger number of actually establishments that we need to do inspections for and response for and follow-ups and potential enforcement or not if they're behaving and doing the right things and we don't have to spend as much time. The good news is, is that particularly with the Mark Thomas and with the Howson in particular, both of those are not to exceed amounts. They're not a given and a guarantee of money. In fact, the Mark Thomas, because of, because we haven't had some issues and haven't had many SSO events, they have, we have a pretty significant savings this year in terms of what they had anticipated in their contract for SSO response. So those were line itemed out. So they're, so we won't have those expenditures, assuming that we remain clean moving through the end of the fiscal year. So we have the potential and we, as staff, try to save money where we can and hold the cost down.
How significant a contribution were the smart manhole covers?
We think it was a pretty significant for a relatively insignificant cost. They're around $2,500 to $3,000 each, and then you have monitoring that goes with them. So they're a, they're a pretty amazingly inexpensive way to get some real-time notice. We put in five and then initially ourselves, believing that that was the right thing to do, and then four additional came with the settlement with the water board. And we clearly, particularly, I think, in the railroad avenue area, were able to probably miss a potential SSO event simply because we were monitoring, staff was monitoring, SAM was monitoring, and we got out. And there's another incident in which we were given pretty early warning that there was something wrong, and this is in the downtown area. So we think they're definitely a benefit to us, and we think that, along with the upcoming smoke testing that we're going to be doing and looking at the cross connections, interconnections, will go a long way to addressing it. But I mentioned it in, I think, the last time I was here talking about the SAM, the inner tie, interconnection bypass line we did at Ocean and Miramonees probably did as much this year to save us from some SSO potential events, particularly in the railroad, as anything we did. We were monitoring and we were aware of it, but the bottom line is, is that SAM staff said that that probably saved us from an incident just because of the heavy rainfalls and the infiltration. So it's a package deal with all of these things that are helping work through it.
We're going in a good direction. Thanks.
We're heading in the right direction.
Can I make a motion? Any more discussion? Okay. I move that we authorize the city manager to execute Amendment Number 1 to the Professional Services Agreement with Sewer Authority Midcoast, extending the expiration date to June 30, 2020, at a not-to-exceed amount of $176,458. I'd like to make part of that, can I just put all three in one motion? Yeah. Also authorize the city manager to execute Amendment Number 1 to the Professional Services Agreement with Mark Thomas Company, modifying the scope of services to address the fats, oils, and greases, the FOG program, and increasing the annual cost to $248,340. And I'd like to further authorize the city manager to execute Amendment Number 2 to the Professional Services Agreement with VW Howson and Associates, extending the expiration date to June 30, 2020, and amending the scope of services at an annual cost of $175,100 in fiscal year 2019, 20.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, John. Good work.
We will, John. We'll remember. The next item is 3B, Award of Contract Design of Poplar Complete Street Project.
So I am going to recuse myself from participating in the deliberation on this item as well as the voting on this item. And the reason is the location of my primary residence, which is less than 500 feet from Poplar Street. And that's pursuant to the, I believe it's the Political Reform, California Political Reform Act, which the city attorney will describe in more detail.
Yeah, I'm happy to elaborate on this issue. So as Councilwoman Reddick referred to, the Political Reform Act, which is implemented with the FPPC regulations, do you require a recusal where an elected official would have a conflict of interest due to a financial impact on their property? And specifically, it prohibits taking part in a governmental decision if it's reasonably foreseeable that the decision will have a material financial effect on one or more of the official's financial interests that's distinguishable from the decision... of the official's financial interests that's distinguishable from the decision's effect on the public generally. With respect to real estate interests, this is often referred to as the 500-foot rule. So, I, I did look at this and I did want to note that the scope of this project is still a little bit in flux. So, my advice regarding recusal is conservative. There are potential exceptions that, once we know a little bit more about the scope, could, could apply if, you know, if we were able to get time to seek the advice of the FPPC. Specifically, there are exceptions with regard to projects that affect the public generally. That would have to be 25% or more of the city's population. If the project affects, you know, the council member equally, as 25% or more, then recusal is not required. And then there's another exception regarding public safety projects. But again, my advice is conservative here and until the scope is a little better defined and there's an opportunity to seek the advice of the FPPC, I, I am recommending recusal due to the 500-foot rule.
So, obviously, I'm in the same boat, in need of recusal on this topic. I've heard a lot about it, so I wish I could help out, but we will recuse ourselves and enjoy the discussions.
Thank you, Debbie. Thank you, Adam. We'll come get you. Anywhere. The staff report will now be delivered by Maz and John.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, pleased to be here and pleased that we've been able to generate some community interest and, and engagement. And, and I say that not in jest, but actually, this has been a very good, I think, conversation around the community, around, I think, what we believe would be a very important project and something of great value to the residents as well as visitors alike. We will be tonight just simply asking for your approval to award a contract for design of the Poplar Street project, namely, that includes work for both the actual design as well as community outreach. I think what we've seen in the, in the process through Nextdoor and all the other avenues of conversation and those tonight, I'm sure as part of the public comment, is a continuing desire and want for more information and more community input. And that's what this contract offers us, the opportunity to proceed forward. Before I turn it over to Maz, I just want to say and reiterate for the record that our interest, I think, is aligned with those of the community, which is to protect the unique character and nature of Poplar Street, to protect the incredible resources that are there, including the heritage trees that are existing. And nothing in our dreams, plans of any sort had ever ventured into the realm of removing those trees and replacing those with standard curb gutter and sidewalk. And so, we'll talk a little more about that. But I think just for the record and for those in the audience and those in the, in the television audience, just to be clear, that's what we proceeded with. I think that's what the council asked us to move forward with. Jules was here, I think, three years ago and said, "You'll never do anything with Poplar, so I don't know why I waste my breath." And then, you know, we said, "Hey, we're going to come back and do something." So, now maybe whether he won't like that or not, I don't know, but we'll leave that for Jules. But to say, with that, I will turn over to Maz for the rest of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, John, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, community halfing bait. Tonight, I'm going to talk a little bit about the award of the design and environmental contract for the Poplar Street project. As John mentioned, tonight, the recommendation from staff is to adopt the resolution, authorize the city manager to execute the agreements with CSW Stuber Stro Engineering Group. The president of CSW, Robert Stevens, is in the audience and is available for any comments as part of the, after the presentation. I just wanted to mention that, that he is here and ready to engage as, as the council would like. Tonight's overview, talk a little bit about the community meetings and input that we've received to date. Talk a little bit about the background of the project, how we got to this point, a little bit on the design concepts and then really jump into the next steps. So, the community meetings, we've had several workshops and public meetings over the last six months or so. In September, we had an open house in the Emergency Operations Center as part of the scheduled BPAC meeting. There was the subsequent November 8th BPAC meeting where we did a deliberation of the open, of the workshop and got additional comments from the committee as well as community members. And then this project was one of the projects we discussed at the Cedar Transportation Fair. That was at the Cedar Center back in January of this year. We received quite a bit of feedback from the community on a number of issues and concerns and I'll talk a little bit about them here. So, of course, the first, one of the first ones was the preservation of the heritage trees. That's something that was highlighted at every meeting and something that we had incorporated into our project's scope early on. Speeding on Poplar was also a large concern as well as parking concerns, whether it's lack of space or too many vehicles parking. But those were the three common themes. There was quite a bit of outreach and information that was provided to us, but those, a lot of them centered on these three main concepts. We did, on the November, on the September 8th meeting, we actually had a lot of poster boards. We had a, an aerial image of Poplar Street without any layout on top of it, but really more of a, of a block map that showed the entirety of the project's scope as well as some different options regarding the design that I'll talk about a little bit later. So, the background of this project, we've, the city did receive a OABAG 2 grant, One Barrier Grant, back in 2016 for about $1.2 million towards the construction of this Poplar Street project. The scope is from Main Street to Railroad Avenue and this was identified as multimodal route in several adopted planning documents with the city, two specifically is the 2013 circulation element as well as the, the current draft bicycle and pedestrian master plan, as well as the previous countywide master, bicycle and pedestrian master plan. The design concepts that are, that will be considered as we move forward with this project are the community aesthetics, retention of the heritage trees and the unique characteristics of, and charm of, of Poplar Street. It's something that really, that really grabs you when you enter from Highway 1 and we want to keep and maintain that feeling of that beach town, more of a rural feel to the, to the roadway. Another consideration is speed reduction. We're going to look at different alternatives, just to name a couple, you know, speed humps to slow vehicular traffic down as they're going up and down Poplar Street as well as bulb bouts to further narrow areas at intersections, provide shorter crossing distances for pedestrians, as well as narrowing of the roadway to slow down speeds. Roadway resurfacing is another part, a component of this project. We will look at how we can reconstruct our, our Poplar Street. It's, it's a street that I believe is in the low 40s as far as the PCI, the Pavement Condition Index. And it's, it's been on the list of maintenance for quite some time now and with this project, we hope to, to take care of that as well. Another important component is the green infrastructure and stormwater management. This kind of goes hand in hand with complete streets these days. The green infrastructure is something that we want to incorporate, which is basically a non-piped stormwater discharge system for this, for this area. It's probably going to be more of a linear approach with bio-retention swells that may line the frontage on one or both sides. And so, those are some of the considerations we're going to be making, as well as promoting alternative modes of transportation and really trying to reduce vehicles in general traveling down Poplar Street, accessing the coastal trail as well as Poplar Beach. So, next steps after tonight, we're looking at, for tonight, so we're looking at the approval of the, award of the contract for design and environmental services with CSW. And then, once the contract is in place, we're going to look at moving forward with additional public outreach and community meetings. We're going to start with the, do a site investigation and topographic survey and then ultimately go towards a conceptual design and environmental review as well as construction documents for a potential advertisement for bid. So, again, the recommendation tonight, I'll leave it up there. And that concludes our presentation.
If I could just to, to say this, and to sort of conclude this beyond that point, we're hopeful that you'll and the community will support moving forward tonight. If we do, the final decision of the design ultimately lends on your lap coming back and nothing can move forward in terms of construction. Nothing can happen on this without the city council's approval. And as such, there still is a lot of control that you reserve and that we, and your community expects of you. And so, and we're also, as part of this would require a coastal development permit and that either becomes a planning commission and/or council item or potentially even just a council item. But that also is a process that will have to be addressed. So, there are additional public processes. So, nothing in action tonight forecloses upon one additional community input and outreach on our part. Does not mandate a design. There are a lot of tools in the toolbox. We've talked about this in other occasions, that this is not a one-size-fits-all. What works perhaps on the east side of Highway 1 may be different than what works on the west side of Highway 1 for the residents and the neighbors. That's part of what this process is to look at this. It doesn't have to be a one-size-fits-all solution. We think that that makes sense and has always made sense. So, just want to be clear for you and the community members that this is just a first step really in the process of a larger community conversation. Thank you.
So, to clarify, what you're saying is we, if we do move to award the contract for design, the, the firm, I'm not sure the name of the firm.
CSW.
CSW.
Stuber Stro.
Stuber Stro.
Stuber Stro.
Stuber Stro.
Stuber Stro.
Stuber Stro. Okay. At any rate, they will come up with a design after utilizing the money we've given. They'll come up with a design, then that design will go to the community for comment?
So, let me put it in a different way. We don't, I think the fear that we, that we, that we got, the most fearful thing we got at the community meetings to date is that we would go ahead and design something and then the council would feel obligated because we spent a lot of money doing it, that they would have to approve it even if the community didn't like it. I think that's a fair statement. That is not what we want to do. So, there is a conceptual design process, there is a community outreach process, and there's a feedback loop that's created within this contract that we get to a conceptual design. That then is what we authorize on to say, "Okay, we have community consensus. We have perhaps bringing back to the council if there is some still issues and concerns within the community to talk about the conceptual." Nothing precludes us from having a study session or coming back and talking about that. We are not going to proceed with, with basically preparing bid documents without a good sense from the community and from the council that we are at a design that, conceptually, that works for everyone to the greatest extent possible. We won't have 100% ever, but consensus, I think, is a critical piece in the community.
And I think that the, you're addressing the issue of the heritage trees right at the outset has been very, very helpful because most of the emails that I've received have to do with the heritage trees and the fear that the city's just going to cut them all down and widen the street and the rest of it. So, that's good.
Thank you.
Unless we have any clarifying questions, I have three public comments that I would like to hear first. Is it clarifying?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, based on the initial public outreach summaries that you provided, it was, the public indicated that preserving these trees was a priority, right? So, just thinking about future communication, I'm just wondering what your sense of is how we, where the misperception may have been created, you know, if there's things we could do better on our part. So, and we're doing that now, but I'm just kind of wondering, was there anything that somehow created that misperception that trees would be removed or?
Honestly, I think, I mean, we can always Monday morning quarterback this thing and say, "Okay, what could we have done better?" And, and I think we, I think we put out a nice document that spoke to this issue, but I would say we probably got that out too late in the process, later than what we would optimally like to do and communicate that. We had, I think, one of the compounding issues was that the Parks and Recreation Commission had a workshop last week to discuss the Poplar gateways. I think that Poplar gateways workshop led to some frustration for folks because there was a lot of conversation and folks there who thought they were going to have a chance to talk about the Poplar Street issue. And so, I think, obviously, there was this sort of uprising and concern within the upwelling in the community a little bit about this and we probably didn't react and respond as timely as we could have to address that issue and for that, I'll take responsibility. Our kind of thought process was, was, I think, a little perhaps parochial, that we had been talking about this throughout the process, that we would be coming back at this point and that this was really the beginning of the process, not an end to the process. And I think that's just a challenge we have in, in government sometimes of dealing with the bureaucracy, the processes we have to do in terms of complying with certain requirements and open bidding and process and, and then addressing the issues. So, I think we certainly could have done perhaps better and we'll take, and I'll take responsibility for having not done that.
Just one last comment since we have a representative from CSW Stuber Stro Engineering. My recommendation is as we have public meetings and we're presenting different options, and when I look at this photo and the questions slide, that last slide, you see this beautiful canopy of heritage trees, because pictures are always going to speak 1,000 words. So, any opportunity to show what the different options will look like with the canopy, I think will go a long way in allaying concerns from the public so we can always see what is this going to look like looking down this beautiful street. Thank you.
Speaking of the public, Elizabeth Honeyman has a public comment.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Honeyman and I live on Poplar Street and I'm one of the active people on the Nextdoor. But you didn't read all of the notices. I have made copies of 32 people who private messaged me continuously. This is one of the most unpopular plans in the city that I've seen since 1986 when Deborah Roddick and I were fighting with Stan Pastoreno and the rest of the council about the trees on Poplar Street. Our priorities are not just the residents of, for the residents of Poplar Street. People that have private messaged me are all the way up to El Granada. It seems like Poplar Street belongs to everybody in the area. And I guess it always has. But the priorities of those of us that live on Poplar Street, number one concern is the number one concern is the widening of the street. I have an official report where it states widening of the streets only increases speeding. This week, every single day, we've seen the blue and red lights flashing in our Poller. Somebody's speeding again. When you widen the road, we're going to have them speeding side by side. Also, recommendations on the commission, building commission, when he was building his house with his wife fought against sidewalks because he showed where the burms are the best thing to control flooding. Major flooding on our seats, on our streets are in the areas where we have sidewalks. My husband and I, a couple of weeks ago, went and walked all the way from the senior center down to the beach because Mr. Soffer was saying, oh, we got to do it for the seniors. They need a safe place to walk. Well, we walked from the senior center down Poplar on the north side and made it almost all the way to Highway One. There's only two lots that do not have either amicite or concrete or sidewalk. I agree, that should be done. But then you cross over, you turn left on the unused Naomi Partridge Trail, and walk down Grove, less than 200 steps for the seniors to walk to the beach, all the way to Railroad. When it was the bikers, three of the people on the 32 are bikers. And they said, no, that's one of the reasons we like to bike down Poplar. It's a country road. I really urge, before any money is spent, you need to think. I would say more than 40 or 50% of the people in not just Alita Park, Half Moon Bay are totally against the widening and modernizing an industrial-looking effect of our street. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Jules Soffer, followed by Elizabeth Squire.
Good evening again, members of the council and staff. And I also live on Poplar Street, and I live on the corner of Poplar and Highway One. And I'd like to speak to two particular things in regards to the Poplar Street project. One is that the traffic pattern has changed considerably in Alita Park since the light was put in on Poplar. What happens now is that people from all over Alita Park head for Poplar if they want to get out onto Highway One. They don't go on Filbert, and they don't go on Grove. They don't go on Seymour either. Well, maybe on Seymour, but they certainly don't go on Grove and Filbert to get out onto Highway One during commutes, on weekends, whenever Highway One is busy because they feel that they're safer by going to where the light is. Now, this particular pattern is compounded by the fact that when you're on Poplar, you can see all the way up to Highway One, and you can see whether you've got a green light, or a yellow light, or a red light. And what happens frequently is that people will speed up. It's a natural reaction to try and catch that green light. Some of them will even shoot through the yellow and the red at times. And so I'm speaking in favor of speed bumps in particular, speed humps, I'm sorry, speed humps in particular. I think they're a necessity all up and down Poplar, all the way down to the parking lots in the gateway section. And that's not just the people who are racing for the joy of racing that we do see also. The second item that I'd like to suggest that you consider is the burying of utilities. The poles and the lines are ugly, and I realize that every street has them, and there's no particular reason why Poplar should be favored, except that if you want to make it look nice, that's the way of doing it. Because I saw the way Delars and Edie Phillips and the Main Street Beautification Committee was able to make Main Street, turn it, turn it away from looking like a dog to turning it into something nice by just burying all the utilities. And I would commend you, my time is up. I would commend you to consider burying the utilities if that can be done along with this project. Thank you.
Cue Jules, Elizabeth Squire.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, remaining council members, and my neighbors. I don't live on Poplar, but I do live in Arleta Park. I've shared with council and staff my concerns regarding this. My concerns are not your intent, or the intent as discussed in the previous community meetings, or as brought up by staff. My concerns are entirely with the document Attachment Two from CSW, and I'm not going to attempt to say the other names. There is a disconnect. In my, in my world, you know, I do drug development, or I did, and, you know, you send out a RFP. It's a really, really bad sign when you send out a RFP and you've got three bullet points: save the trees, slow the, slow the traffic down, and, you know, keep the ambiance. And none of those three things is in their response. And instead, they specifically say, we'll have to be a little touchy-feely with outreach to the community because of the potential for removal of the trees. Removal of the trees. That's in black and white in their response. Their options that are illustrated in their document are 60-foot, two-lane road, double bike, double pedestrian, 60-foot. This lovely picture you have in front of you on the diagram, it's 32 feet of road on either side of those trees. If you draw a line on Google Earth, it's 44 feet. 60 feet goes 20 feet, 20 feet beyond that, okay? So we're not just talking about, you know, if their image, as shared in Attachment Two, is anything close to what they're going to be discussing, this, the image that you've grasped for, your three points, they're not even on the same page. So before you go forward with spending $156,000 of our money, I ask you, get them on the same page, have them revise their proposal, or talk to some of the other guys who put proposals in front. Because at the end of the day, at this beginning, if their document doesn't reflect your image, it's not going to get better. Because they're starting off in a place that's nowhere near where you are right now. Anyway, that's my concern.
Thank you. Council, you have more comments, or? I have a few comments. The existing, up to now, public input has been primarily from the bike and pedestrian committee. And of course, people who are bikers and pedestrians are going to want bikeways and pedestrian ways, and that's understandable. But as you've heard tonight from a lot of the community people who just live in Alita Park and are concerned about traffic and the heritage trees and the beautiful approach to Railroad, that point of view has not necessarily been incorporated. So I think you should be fully aware that there is a public beyond the BPAC world that has a real interest in what goes on on the complete streets project. I agree with the last speaker that the three points of making sure that traffic doesn't get any worse, but slowing traffic down, preserving the beautiful heritage trees there, and not encouraging widening of the street unnecessarily. If there's a way that seniors can get down from the senior center without necessarily having sidewalks, certainly sidewalks on both sides, I think that's all desirable. And I'm hoping that all this is going to come out in the community input. But when I read the staff report, I, like the last speaker, was really concerned because it seemed like we were given options, all of which included a widening of the street, widening of the traffic lanes, little consideration for speed humps, or bulbouts, or anything else that would slow the traffic down. So I'm encouraged by what John has said, that he's really looking forward to honest community input. There's a lot of people who live in that area who have concerns, and from my opinion, rightful concerns. So I think we should definitely start on the, funding the design proposal, but not having it cast in stone that it has to be wide, that it has to have large bike lanes. And just listen to the community and have honest community input because I think you've heard today that there are a lot of people in the, in the community who are concerned. But I'm in favor of starting the design process.
Yeah, I would like to ask CSW to respond to the last speaker's concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and fellow council members. My name is Robert Stevens, and I'm actually a resident of Half Moon Bay. I live on Roosevelt in Miramar. It's a different street than Poplar, but I think it faces some of the similar challenges. And I've had the good fortune of working in communities throughout the Bay Area solving transportation, bike, pedestrian issues. And, you know, a lot of the concerns I've heard tonight are not different than I've heard in other communities. And our process, and maybe it didn't come out as clear as I would have liked in our proposal, but the overall intent of our work is, in the first phase, we sort of start off with trying to understand what is actually happening out there. What are truly the existing conditions? What are the traffic, what's the traffic conditions? How many vehicles, how many bikes, how many pedestrians are using the street? How fast are the vehicles really traveling? And if there's collisions that are occurring out there, how are they happening? And why are they, are they happening? The second thing is to look at the water that's flowing down the street to kind of figure out, is flooding happening? How is flooding happening? Is there things we can do to improve it? And the other thing we look at, and one of the critical components in this section, is the environmental resources that we find out there. There are the trees, they are the wetlands that potentially exist along the corridor. A lot of neighbors have put improvements within the public right-of-way. And we know that that, people put a lot of effort into that, and we need, know we need to review and look at that. So this first phase really assesses these existing conditions and allows us to understand what's actually out there. And the first phase of our outreach process is really about reporting back and listening to what the concerns of the community are. And they, they can range from folks that really want to improve bicycle access to pedestrian access, to protecting trees, to reducing vehicle speeds. And then it really comes down to working at, and studying many options of how we can balance all these competing interests and come up with a series of alternatives that then can be presented and worked with the community members and the stakeholders to find the preferred alternative. One, one moment, one point I'd like to also point out is that California has a rule that when we, when we repave a roadway, we must address complete streets. So that doesn't mean that along the entire corridor, do we have to add bike lanes, or do we have to add sidewalks? But in the process of rehabilitating the roadway, the city has a requirement to evaluate what complete streets components we can put in there. So it could be as simple as providing sidewalk gaps and enhancing accessibility. It could be improving bicycle capabilities where they are. So what I would say is, starting today, I and my firm and my team, I don't think we have any preconceived notions about what Poplar Street should be. We're really excited to do some.
That's what it should be, yeah.
Perfect, perfect.
And that's not mentioned. You use that on your title, on your, the cover sheet, but not once do you have a statement that you are going to preserve those trees.
So as I would say, our point would be, if this was our first community meeting, that would be the first thing we would write up. Tree preservation is number one. And then we, then the next step would be to come up with some alternatives that respond to that. And it could be, there is no sidewalk where the trees are. Maybe it's a decomposed granite path that goes around the backside of the trees. Maybe it's no sidewalk at those locations. I don't know what the, what the ultimate solution is, but I think it's important to develop a range of potential options that all folks in the community can, can evaluate.
Can't we hold off the check until we have a more clear understanding of each line?
We really can't interact this way. It's just not the way meetings like this work. I'm sorry. I would love to engage, but we can't.
Thank you.
So I think it's clear today that we're not approving any design, conceptual or otherwise. We're just starting the process where community input will help to create a design. And with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we authorize the city manager to execute an agreement for design services and environmental review for the Poplar Complete Street project with CSW Stuber Stroh Engineering Group Incorporated in the amount of $156,000.
Second, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Let's take a break until five minutes to nine, and we can retrieve our missing council members. And we're going to talk about the automated license plate readers program at five minutes to nine. to nine.
We're going out of order with item 3F, the Automated License Plate Readers Presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you again for this opportunity to bring some information to not only the Council, but also the members of the community for the Automated License Plate Reading Technology. We believe at the Sheriff's Office that this tool is very effective in not only criminal investigations, but also identifying missing persons, and also locating people at risk, such as Amber Alert situations, and also Silver Alert. The intention of the presentation is to bring information to the public and to hopefully answer as many questions as possible with today's presentation, and also obtain approval from Council to move forward with a site survey at three designated locations within the city of Half Moon Bay. Before we begin the presentation, I want to assure the community and also the Council that any data that's collected through this technology, if it does move forward, will not be shared with any immigration agency, or ICE, or DHS. So I just want to make that clear, and also my guest will make that clear during his presentation. Again, prior to passing the mic to my guest, I'm going to read a quick bio resume for him. Sitting to my right is Executive Director Mike Senna of the Northern California High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area, also known as HIDA, Northern California Regional Intelligence Center, also known as NICRIC. Since 1993, Executive Director Mike Senna has a diverse law enforcement career with the California Department of Alcohol Beverage Control, California Department of Justice, the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office, and the San Mateo County District Attorney's Office. His assignments have included the investigation of major drug trafficking organizations, violent gang organizations, career criminals, terrorist organizations, and organized crime groups. In 2006, Mike Senna was assigned by Cal DOJ to the Northern California High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area to develop what is now known as the Regional Intelligence Center as a deputy director. In 2012, he was appointed as executive director, which he holds today for both HIDA and NICRIC. A brief background on what HIDA is, it provides support for narcotic enforcement initiatives, task forces comprised of and co-located federal, state, and local law enforcement personnel. The HIDA is funded through the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, or the Office of ONDCP. NICRIC is one of 79 governor-designated and Department of Homeland Security-recognized Fusion Centers located in the United States in U.S. territories. NICRIC is a multi-agency task force with more than 70 intelligence officers that are assigned from federal, state, and local law enforcement, fire service, and public health agencies. Mr. Senna also serves as a president of the National Fusion Center Association, chairman of the Criminal Intelligence Coordinating Council, and is a chairman of the HIDA Directors' Intelligence Committee. So it's my honor to introduce Executive Director Mike Senna.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the Council. And I appreciate this opportunity to provide some educational material to you, as well as the members of the public. What I first want to start off with is, you know, our goal as far as our information-sharing coordination efforts evolve around using technology, people with analytical skills, along with developing privacy policies, policies that protect civil rights and civil liberties. And what we really do is, you know, our tools assist law enforcement, and especially when we talk about automated license plate recognition tools, assist them in doing processes that were previously done manually, that were not very effective, certainly not very efficient, and didn't have much accountability. So these tools allow us to have both that efficiency, the effectiveness, and the accountability and tracking of what's being done with the information. And as far as the regional perspective on the connectivity of ALPRs, there are ALPR readers throughout most of the country right now. And through a partnership that we've developed with San Mateo County Sheriff's Office, and what we've done with agencies throughout our region, we've developed policies, we've developed privacy impact assessment, audit controls, and cyber physical security of the data. The other piece that we've developed along with that is, you know, bringing together agencies throughout our region that previously didn't share information, didn't connect with each other. Most people don't realize that there's over 18,000 law enforcement agencies in America. In our very region here, we have over 224 different agencies and organizations, law enforcement. And our role is to bring those people together, federal, state, local folks, and our center is really designed and staffed with representation from the community that we have at large, that public safety community. And not only encompasses the law enforcement side, but encompasses the fire, emergency preparedness type folks, and those folks that are engaged in public safety. Now, what we've done with that is bringing people together to look at our strengths, look at our deficiencies, and really tackle large issues within the Bay Area for information sharing, with the goal of public safety, and also protecting privacy, civil rights, and civil liberties. With that focus, our region is Northern California. So we, our area of coverage, the area I'm responsible for, is from Monterey up to Del Norte. The other piece that we have is that we're part of a larger system. So within California, we're part of a state threat assessment system that includes other centers, just like the one that we have, the NICRIC, the Northern California Regional Intelligence Center, which is here in the Bay Area. There are 78 other centers, and then within California, there's six centers that we coordinate with, a total of six centers in the state of California. Now, the other part that we look at when we discuss the ALPR piece, and there's two, you know, two primary use cases for that. One is that instant feedback alert. So these license plate readers and detection systems basically collect that data as far as the image of the license plate. It translates that through optical character recognition and runs that through a database. So as soon as a license plate is read in the system, it passes that through that background database of what we consider to be a hot list, those vehicles that we're looking for. So it may be anything from a known or suspected terrorist, to a stolen vehicle, to a vehicle of a subject under investigation, or someone that is registered as a sex offender or arson registrant. Those alerts are immediate hits that come through the system. It could be somebody that's wanted for a crime. And that gives instantaneous feedback to that user that says that this plate may be associated with somebody involved in criminal activity.
If I could just interrupt?
Yes, sir.
You keep talking about persons and Amber Alerts. The system does not recognize faces or people actually driving, is that correct?
That is correct. This is optical character recognition. It only recognizes license plates. So it reads the plate and then runs those plate numbers through the system. So no facial recognition.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Question. So when the image is captured, it's immediately, you know, processed, and a matching process goes on? So it's not like it's stored until it's needed for some sort of law enforcement investigation or action?
That's actually scenario case number two. So the first one is the alert mechanism. The second one is that image capture for investigative purposes. So in our area, we, you know, that's later in my slide, but I'll just say it now, we capture that image, and for 12 months, that image is stored for investigative purposes. So, and that can be used to canvas a crime scene, that can be used to locate suspects, victims, witnesses, and complete, partial, incomplete suspect vehicle descriptions. So the system is designed that if you only have two or three numbers or letters of a plate, a witness only sees those few numbers, we can search those few numbers and see if there's any matching vehicles that match those numbers from a potential crime scene. Or if you have a large area where a large crime scene that's occurred, or you may have multiple victims, license plate readers can go and scan through that area, and what would have taken us hours to, you know, write down every license plate we're driving by, capture them instantaneously, and then be able to canvas that data that we would have needed previously. So that's the second case scenario, is that investigative purpose, to allow those folks who may be doing a long-term investigation, or at least one within 12 months, be able to connect serial criminal activity.
Instant matching, instant processing, but then storage for investigation purposes?
That's correct. Instantaneously hits and returns to say the subject is, you know, this vehicle is associated with some criminal activity, an Amber Alert, whatever it may be, so that instant hit. And the way that works, and there's two use case scenarios. So one is within the vehicle. So in the vehicle, the alert pops up on the screen right away, so a patrol vehicle that has it can have that instantaneous hit. The other way that's used is that the hit can go out via SMS system or email directly to a user, so they get that in their, basically, well, it usually went three to 10 seconds, they see that hit. In some locations, we have cities and counties that have installed feed into the dispatch center, so they get that hit in the dispatch center. And that way, they can call a patrol car or a motor officer to say, hey, this vehicle just passed. And some of our most successful cities that use this use it that way, and the moment that a stolen vehicle enters the city, a patrol officer is stopping that car, within usually, in some cities, within 30 seconds to a minute, which, you know, is amazing from a law enforcement perspective. So those are kind of the instant hit scenario, or you have an investigator, and I'll describe some use case scenarios towards the end of my presentation as well. Now, the typical value to those agencies is it really decreases the reportable crimes, including burglary, and the way that actually happens in the real world, and also increasing the recovery of vehicles that are actually stolen by somebody. Oftentimes, we get stolen vehicles recovered on the side of the road. In this case, it allows us to actually-- In this case, it allows us to actually stop the vehicle or encounter the person that's driving the vehicle and actually catch that offender, which, you know, previously didn't happen a whole lot. But it allows you to do that, and the decrease in reportable crimes, and when we talk about burglary, those communities that have used it effectively in their communities have actually seen large decreases in burglaries and other property crimes, because as, unfortunately, criminals start talking to each other about, hey, this community, I've been caught in, don't go there because of the technology. And we've seen large decreases in property crimes in those cities that have used a successful strategy. Now, the other piece of this is, you know, bringing in together, you know, all the data from the region. So it's not just that a person that commits a crime in Half Moon Bay isn't also going out to Oakland, or San Francisco, or San Jose to do criminal activity. So this allows us to connect disparate criminal activity that a person may be involved in in multiple jurisdictions. So it brings that data together so that we can actually put that full picture together for investigators. Now, the other piece that we've worked on is the, you know, the effective and proper utilization of the system, development of the privacy policies, and those policies are online. We actually have a number of sections that we have, and there's some links included in the presentation that's been provided. But really, the important piece for us on this is making sure that when data is collected, it's being used responsibly, and that only people who have a need and right to know that information should have access to it. And, you know, who has access to the data? We don't provide public access to this information. It's meant for law enforcement personnel for investigative efforts and lawful efforts. And as far as the privacy concerns on the data, and, you know, each of the agencies that access this system, or the professionals that touch this system, all have to agree to our privacy policies, how it will be used, and one of those policies that we put into place is that it cannot be used for immigration, solely for immigration enforcement efforts. So the concept that ICE and DHS having access to the system is something that we have prohibited. And we also, within the Vigilance System, which is known by Motorola, that system has a little checkbox in it that says, do you desire to share with DHS? And I can tell you that in this county, that box is unchecked. That is not an agency that this information is accessible to. They may make lots of requests for it, but they don't get that data.
You said, because this county, people in this county might not check it. But what if other counties are checking it, you know? Aren't there privacy issues, not just maybe in your own county, but?
Well, and that-
Different counties have different privacy policies?
They do, but most of the counties lining with SB 54 in California, that was one of the first things that I did with, especially with Vigilance as a company and other companies, was saying that you have to have that as a primary thing that people are educated on to turn that off, so that they do not share with DHS and with ICE and ERO, the Enforcement and Removal Operations. So when that box is checked for this county and the readers that collect here, that doesn't mean that another agency who checks it can get that same access of our data. So when we restrict our access to our files and our collection point, that doesn't translate to another agency being authorized to share that data. And recently, there was an article about an Orange County agency that, and the article that came out said, well, this other agency did the search for ICE, and I actually followed up on that. And it was actually a person who was assigned to a center that was doing that, and he was fitted within SB 54 in the legal purpose of that being a gang investigation. So in that certain circumstance, that person was authorized to do a search for a gang investigation, not for immigration enforcement, but for a specific gang investigation. So we do have the ability to, if it is a criminal act or a violent crime, and as enumerated in SB 54, that we can search individual file for not, you know, for immigration enforcement, but for those at DHS that do criminal investigations. The other piece that we have is, you know, as far as the access to the data, again, is not for immigration enforcement. Only those vetted law enforcement personnel that we personally vet and that are vetted by the organization can have access to that. Everything is tracked and logged, and then, you know, what and why is the data being used, and what's it being used for? It's got to be an approved law enforcement purpose, locate stolen vehicles, amber alerts, looking for that criminal activity. And when we talk about the audit logs, that looks at individuals and what they're searching as far as their reason for searching. So individuals have to provide a case number, investigative violation that they're looking at, and then all of those transactions are logged of what they're searching for. Now, as far as how long data is retained, and that's all over the place around the country. We have everything from New Jersey that has five years to New Hampshire that doesn't retain anything. And when we looked at kind of what we do locally in California, we've maintained our records for 12 months on a number of different systems within the Department of Justice at the state, and our files that we store are for 12 months. So we went with that 12-month retention period to give investigators at least a year timeframe to follow up on cases, to put those investigations together. After that, it's purged from the system, and purged means it's gone. Once that 12-month cycle, 365 days, comes up, that data is erased from the system. It doesn't exist anymore. The only exception is if we have a file vehicle that is associated with a specific criminal activity, that data can be retained for five years for that investigation. And when we look at Senate Bill, you know, 34, and we looked at kind of what happened or the decision to, you know, what we should do with ALPR information and the data, the big things that came up were the same things that we've been working on for decades in our area. You know, who has access to the information, the transparency on kind of the use of the system, the posting, the public opportunities to discuss what ALPR technology is all about, who has access to the system, the sharing rules, how it's disseminated. And then we looked at, you know, how the operators need to be trained, and the audit and quality controls, as well as that lifespan of data. And all of those were included in the policies that we developed, along with what happens if any breach occurs of stored information? How do we disclose that? And SB 34 covers a lot of that, but those are incorporated in what we do. The other part of that is when we look at maintaining that reasonable security procedures and how that should be done, we looked at both how we control it here, as well as how the vendors that are engaged in this business of working with us. With our data and our systems, we have 24-hour days, seven day a week, security. Our systems are controlled in a secret environment, so that way no members of the public or no members that don't have a secret clearance, including those that are in law enforcement, can enter our facility. And there are similar security measures for those facilities that are held in the private sector that use this data. We also require multi-factor authentication, encryption, cyber protection, both physical protection measures, as well as kind of how the data is destroyed, if there's any modifications, and any disclosure related to the ALPR information. As far as the implementation of our ALPR policies, those are all available on the website. We have that, and those are listed. A lot easier than going and looking at all these links is just go to ncric.org, and you can look in the section on privacy and our policies, and many more policies besides this are up there on the site. Now, the other piece is when you look at SB 34, and this is kind of the purposes of the searches, and that's locate stolen, wanted subjects in investigation, locate and apprehend individuals that are subject to arrest warrants or otherwise lawfully sought by law enforcement, locate witnesses and victims of violent crime, locate missing persons, identification of vehicles associated with targets of criminal investigation, protecting participants at special events. And I can tell you that we do this from time to time at special events, and we have had known or suspected terrorists driving towards special events, and that alert goes off. The other thing that we've had is protecting those critical infrastructure sites who may be targeted and threatened by everything from organized criminal activity to terrorist organizations. Now, kind of the use-case scenarios and success stories that we've seen in our region, and going over that, you know, both, and one of them is, and usually they are the investigative success stories, which are the deepest and richest. We had a witness to a strong-arm robbery. They identified the vehicle, they had the license plate. That happened in a shopping center right here, actually, on the other side of the hill there on 92, large shopping center. We had, you know, strong-arm robbery, they took the woman's purse, injured her, and all they had was the vehicle license plate and description. They ran the vehicle. That vehicle came out to a Central Valley location, and a dispatcher, you know, knowing how the system works, ran that plate and found that that vehicle had been parked numerous times in Redwood City. So contacted Redwood City from the city of San Mateo. Redwood City PD drove over to that location right as the suspects were parking their car in front of the house. They contacted them, arrested them, the woman came over, positively ID'd them, and they had the woman's property. That was something that we'd never be able to do. Otherwise, in the past, we would have sent someone out to the Central Valley, or contacted the agency, said, could you look for this car? And odds are, we wouldn't find it anytime soon. But those folks were taken into custody that day. Another success story that we had on our list here was we had a vehicle that was involved in shooting, or not vehicle, but a subject that was involved in shooting at multiple people over an extended period of time. He was shooting at cars, and it was something that we would have, you know, we had a lot of difficulty. We put both cameras up, fixed cameras, and we put up mobile readers in the area. And one of our folks, after one of the incidents, had a timeline of where the vehicle may have been, and went through that video and looked through and found a distinctive set of headlights. Looked at that headlight, matched that headlight to images in an ALPR, identified the license plate, and at the same time notified law enforcement of that license plate. A chase ensued, they ended up capturing the subject, but that person had been doing that for quite some time until we got the technology out there and were able to solve that very quickly. We also had another success story of a subject that was robbing banks. They had, you know, three letters of license plate. They ran those three letters in the system, it came up with a match for a couple of vehicles, one of them was an exact match. They went out, they knocked on the door of the subject, the subject immediately confessed that it was him, and the FBI was able to take him into custody. The last story I have is a 12-year-old girl, and as a subject exposed himself to the girl, reached out to grab her. All they had was, and she fought the suspect away, he ran away, hopped into a vehicle, she had a color of a vehicle and a vehicle description. So Daly City Police Department went through every image within that timeframe, and they found a matching vehicle. They immediately ran that plate and found the vehicle in San Francisco. They went up there and contacted the subject and took him into custody. They also found out along that same investigative route that that person had done the same thing in that same city. But luckily, that one girl was able to fight her way off and identify the vehicle, and that person was taken into custody. The reason I'm here today is, and the reason that, you know, I've been doing this mission for quite some time, you know, I spent a lot of my life, 22 years, working task force operations. And my first task force was April of 1997, and it was the abduction of a kid. And he was taken from in the back of his yard, thrown into a car, and drove off. All we had was a vehicle description and three letters of a license plate. If I had this technology today, I could have solved that crime. But that kid's dead today. Many people died after him because it was a serial killer that captured him. And over and over again, I've seen incidents where this technology could have saved lives. And today, I've actually seen the fruit of that labor where it is saving lives every day. And, you know, although many people in this room don't know it, those readers are all throughout the region, all throughout the country, and they're helping law enforcement officers to do the job the best that they can. We do take it seriously that people are trained on how to use it, how they share information, and that this is a pointer system. It doesn't say that a person's guilty or innocent. This is a very arbitrary system. It reads a license plate, and it puts it into a system, and you use that later for investigations or those instantaneous hits. Without that, we're left to the old days where I was knocking door to door, asking people, did you see anything that happened with this kid? Reaching out and talking to every pedophile that's on the list and saying, where were you? Today, we have the ability, like with that story in Daly City, before that person was able to kidnap somebody, to run that system and find that person immediately where they were in the Bay Area. And it wasn't because, you know, you know, any specific agency doesn't have a desire to share information or stop bad guys, but we all have a desire to, you know, help each community as best we can. And it's each community's decision. You know, I'm not here to say you have to use this or any of this gift technology. I'm just here to give you the options and educational piece on what I've seen in my last 20 years of experience using this technology, is that it's got great benefits, but obviously, I believe in privacy, civil rights, and civil liberties, and we need to protect that as well. So I'm open to any questions that anyone has, and love to hear any comments.
Before we have the council ask questions, I have four public comment cards. Paul Gregorius, followed by Joaquin Jimenez, if he's still here.
Wow. I thought this was complicated when I heard about it first on Thursday, but after listening to Mr. Senna's presentation, it's really complex. And just as a preface, that concerns me. This is a very involved, multifaceted situation that involves justifiable law enforcement, serious crime felony problems, and then also it involves less serious things and serious issues of privacy. I believe, counsel, that before you authorize Vigilance Systems to take the first step in installing this license plate reader technology in Half Moon Bay, you should take the time to acquaint yourselves and us with how this technology works, and how we might avoid the problems that have surrounded its use in the past, which I only learned about in the past few days. It would have been nice to have this presentation in advance and have these links to be able to do this research. This seems to be a fast-moving requirement that we get going with a site survey here. The problem that concerns me, I refer particularly to the report written by the ACLU, the American Civil Liberties Union, less than two months ago, and this is brand-new, in other words, this is now old news, concerning the nationwide mass surveillance dragnet being conducted by the Immigration and Customs Enforcement people, or ICE, which is using Vigilance Database of over 5 billion license plate scans to hunt down immigrants and channel them more efficiently into Donald Trump's robust deportation machine. The ACLU reports that ICE is following a strategy of making friends with local law enforcement personnel and then using them to access the massive database so that ICE can carry out its dragnet. ICE is known to abuse judicial warrant requirements when pursuing immigrants, and apparently the, quote, "strict guidelines," unquote, described in the staff report, and I guess by Mr. Senna, have not been successful in controlling its abuse of the ALPR system. In the written comments I'm submitting to you is a link to the ACLU report, which does a much better job describing the problem than I can do in my three-minute comment. Excuse me. I myself would like to know, well, wait, I think Mike Senna answered this question. He said, the only data, the only images it takes are images of license plates, nothing else. You mentioned headlights, so I wondered, what's doing that? Is that correct? It's only the license plate?
Okay, yeah, so it takes an image of the vehicle. Now, at times, there, it may get things, there's people outside the vehicle, it may get, it's not designed to capture facial recognition or those images, but it wants to get the vehicle frame and the area around the vehicle.
So it's not just the license plate, it's lots of other stuff?
It's getting whatever in that frame area, so, but its focus is the license plate image and collecting that.
Okay. Can we define the term, quote, "legitimate law enforcement purpose," unquote, which seems to be a requirement for granting access to users of Half Moon Bay's data? Can we require judicial warrants for certain searches of our data? What is the role of Vigilance Systems in permitting the use of the data? Do we understand the role of the so-called NCRIC in the operation of the system? Well, I guess we've had about a half an hour's worth of a briefing on that role. I don't understand it because I haven't had a chance to research it yet. Does the city of Half Moon Bay retain any rights regarding access to or use of our data? I'm looking forward to hearing the answers to these and other important questions before we take any steps to implement the ALPR system. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Paul. So Joaquin is not here, is that right? John Hulam is next. John Ullam is next.
John Ullam, Half Moon Bay. You look good up there. I think that I was kind of surprised by the lack of emphasis of where this data is really going. Vigilant is the actual provider of the services, the cameras, the data, the algorithms, the searching tools, they're the ones that enforce the rules. First, I thought that the data would be held by us or held by the sheriff. That's not the case. It goes into a large national database in the cloud. I would remind you that the President of the United States has no problem asking the Russians to hack databases. And so, and databases do get hacked. I would remind you that Facebook has lots of policies. They've promised many a time to follow those policies, and it hasn't worked out that way. I would like you to consider that most of the use case scenarios that have been provided tonight really revolve around a hot list. Not any data being recorded about what's going on, just flagging vehicles that are, you know, being looked for. That's an excellent use of the technology, okay? We know we've got somebody that's out there that's being looked for. Probably a judge has issued a warrant or something like that. There's some sort of protections, and it makes sense. It's not being stored in a database. We're looking for somebody. But that's not, you know, what they're talking about. They want to store it for a year or three years, for as long as whatever policies we agree to. But you need to know that Vigilant is in the business to collect and sell data. That's what they do. And so you're inviting the snake into the house, so to speak. And Vigilant isn't just about collecting license plate data. They're deeply into facial recognition technology. I know it's been brought up that the system won't do that. What do you think is coming next? It's going to be in four years, two years, you're going to be here? Because it's going to be an excellent technology. It works. They can pull faces out of crowds of thousands of people, and they can scan this stuff in seconds. So they're going to get good at it. And after they get done with facial technology, they're working on artificial intelligence, the same company Vigilant, that's going to take all of this together and become predictive. It's going to look at your expression on your face. It's going to look at all the people you've been with. It's going to follow your networks and build up all these things. It's what's called, what John Poindexter called, total information awareness. It's the ability for the government to know everything, real time, and we're helping enable it. So I would have been opposed totally to the system, but the hot list thing is dead, you know, that's what they would call a killer application. That makes sense. Someone comes into your town that you're being, that's being looked for actively. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Charlie Hodgson is the last speaker.
Thank you, members of the city council, for allowing me to speak. I have to defer to my neighbors. I agree with everything that they had to say. But I also want to add that it may not be a civil constitutional issue yet, my physical location. However, this system will keep record of my physical location. I think it can reasonably derive the idea that I'm using my own vehicle for up to a year, and I think this is a violation of rights to come. And currently, my phone can't be used to find my physical location, and this would be another way to get at that same data. So I just want to express my concerns in that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Counsel?
Well, I have a few questions. So I get that the camera takes a picture of this space where the license is. Can that camera be repurposed later to capture other images, such as people in the car once, you know, is that system, once it's set up?
You know, it's a very rudimentary system as far as the capture and the optical character recognition piece. The cameras aren't really designed for facial recognition. There's a lot more requirements on that, especially higher definition cameras to even attempt that. And, you know, although there is, you know, as mentioned, there are efforts to do facial recognition, better technology on that. It's nowhere near what I would say would be useful in most cases, especially the image types, because that's a huge part of it. You've got to be able to capture that high-def image quality, and especially getting a, you know, a frontal area of the face. So these cameras aren't designed for that purpose, and the images, the JPGs that they do put out, are very low quality. All they're really looking for to capture are those characters and translating that. So that's the real purpose for them. If you want to go down that route some way in five or 10 years or something like that, you'd have to probably buy a whole new camera system if that was something anybody wanted to do.
Yeah, I was just wondering if it was a software issue or a camera issue. Thank you for that. Next question. So you mentioned all these federal and state agencies that have access to the data, and then there's this overall restriction that the data can't be used solely for immigration purposes. So I don't want to get into it right now, but that does raise a number of questions for me, the use of the word "solely" and how that can be manipulated in different ways. But I would like to see a list of all those federal and state agencies that share that database would be helpful. Because there is that concern that, as someone said, one agency might at some point try and manipulate and violate your restrictions and use a circular route to get that data. It's not unheard of, unfortunately, that that can happen in our society. So nothing against your organization, but I'm seeing it happens. People do things like that for, they think they're well-intended, but we might disagree on the intentions. Can we, so would we have a choice of retaining the data for less than 12 months as part of our contract, if that's what we wanted?
You know, it's up to each community. And I always mention that when you talk about time restrictions, you know, we put it to that specific timeframe because years, over the years, we've said, "We want to give those investigators at least a 12-month period to do their cases." If you restrict it lower than that, the, it doesn't really reduce your, if you're looking at reducing your privacy or civil rights, civil liberties, you know, impact, but it definitely reduces your ability or solvability on criminal activity, the more you reduce it, you know, lower than that 12-month period. Because, you know, the same potential patterns that people have over six months, or the same they have over 12-month period, but if you have a person that is committing crimes throughout the region, that pattern changes. So where they commit crimes in their criminal activities, and that's why we look at overall, if any agency reduces that timeframe, they've reduced that window by however many months that they could have connected it to the other criminal activity that's in San Francisco, the North Bay, East Bay, or South Bay.
Right. Well, I have a number of questions which maybe could provide information later, but, you know, I'm wondering about before we start approving anything, what are the costs, you know, for an initial placement survey? And then, you know, generally, you know, five or six cameras are set up. What kind of cost are we talking about, you know, per year? Because I'm wondering what the exposure is, should we decide later on, well, we don't want this anymore because there's been some misuse or, you know, abuse of it? And then, so that's just one thing, which you might have numbers readily. But most importantly, I understand that we, that we have, Sheriff's Office has had conversations with the American Civil Liberties Union, that some concerns were raised, and that you've had conversations to address those concerns. So I thought we would have, that that would have been part of this presentation, but I think people who have concerns here expressed would love to know what the results of those meetings have been and where that stands. Do you want to talk on the ACLU?
Certainly. And we've, we've had very open communication. I do these on a regular basis, and normally, someone from the ACLU used to show up until, you know, the first two years I did these presentations, they don't show up anymore. But, you know, their concerns are the same things that are in their reports, and they've done a number of reports on license plate recognition technology and the concern that is mass surveillance. I can always tell people that this is not mass surveillance. We don't have readers along every corner. They also are concerned about the retention of information and that, you know, that it's showing patterns of life. But, you know, as far as the use of the technology and the use case scenarios that we use, and we do put the, you know, in that Cent Bell 34 on page 27 of the slide deck, kind of those use case scenarios that, you know, why we use it and how it's used. But we also, you know, the ACLU has always said, hey, this is a great technology for finding those bad guys and that instantaneous hit. But they've never been like the idea of the investigative piece. But for us, that's always been the biggest part of, you know, the criminal activity and finding people that are engaged in violent criminal acts is that long-term investigative piece. That's the piece where we've gone back and said, in many areas of, especially in San Mateo County and other counties, where people have gone back, and I can tell you that every time we talk about a major investigative case, and we've brought in city managers from various cities in the Bay Area to see this, where they've actually seen that every time somebody talks about a major case and involves the use of ALPR to help them identify that pattern of that criminal activity and actually intercept that person once they've figured out the pattern. So there's, you know, those use case scenarios have been, you know, these are a short, you know, window into that, but there's a lot more that, you know, we'd love to provide deeper in-depth briefings on kind of how it's used in a regular investigative way. When we talk about the cost, there's no real site survey with it. You're looking at, and you may have, Saul may have some more on that, but you're paying for basically the units themselves to be deployed. Actually, usually the biggest cost, depending on where you're at, is actually the hardware deployment and location of posting these things, getting electricity to those sites, getting fiber to those sites, because we need, you know, in order to have the system work effectively, you've got to have, you know, good bandwidth to pull those images as they're coming through and run them through the system. As far as the storage of that, all the data is stored in a centralized repository. So there are caveats to that, and that's where that, you know, clicking, checking the box of who can access it, and that's where that, you know, clicking the box that says this will not be shared with DHS, that's one of those pieces where, you know, and when we talk about other agencies, if other agencies violate, you know, our rules or requirements or how they access, then, and if it's discovered, they're excluded or not permitted to use that system anymore. So that's kind of the rules behind that. As far as other agencies and cameras that are in place, I can tell you that where it has, I don't have any locations in the country that it has been deployed and then someone has decided to pull it out. People will see results, it may not be instantaneous, but within months to a year, they see the results on these investigative support in the cases. And you guys, I mean, realistically, when you look at crime rates in the Bay Area, and that's a big piece of what I do, you don't have huge crime rates. It's not that type of community. But you do have crime, and the people that commit crime here are also committing crime in other communities in the Bay Area. So although you may have a streak of four incidents or conservative streak, that same person that committed crime here four times committed dozens of other criminal acts in other parts of the jurisdictions within our area. Investigators are able to connect those crimes. Unfortunately, without those areas that, you know, communities that don't have these cameras, we can't do those connections. We can't solve those crimes unless we run into the person or get an informant that tells us what happened. And I know Saul has cases just like that.
I do. Actually, we have one case that everyone's familiar with, the commercial burglars that occurred in November of 2018 here on Main Street. Although our local deputies did a great job in obtaining photographic evidence of the vehicle that was being used during those break-ins, it actually took an ALPR-captured photo from another jurisdiction on the peninsula to actually confirm the same suspect committing the same crimes on the peninsula that they did here in Half Moon Bay. So that's just one linked story using ALPR by our Investigations Bureau in Redwood City. Another case that I would say that could have been, come to a quicker resolution was the young lady back in July from Oregon who was reported missing to our office here on the coast, and she made her way through cell phone tracking down the coast, down Highway 1, and ended up in Monterey, and she survived on just drinking water from a radiator hose, if you remember, in Monterey County. But we spent, not only our detectives, but our deputies spent close to 100 hours working on that case, tracking her and trying to get a, you know, try to locate her. So if we did, in fact, have this technology, let's say, at the northernmost point of Highway 1, we would have been able to confirm, and also on the south point of Highway 1 of the city limits, that she would, she drove through, and she was no longer in the area. And we could have concentrated our efforts, everything south of Half Moon Bay. And unfortunately, it took us several days to connect the dots with Monterey County and work with their search teams to locate her. You know, there was another incident that occurred where I think this technology would have been very useful. There was a young lady out of San Jose that was reported at-risk, suicidal, to our Half Moon Bay office by the husband, saying that she had taken an infant child with her and she was threatening suicide. And luckily, our deputies were savvy enough to work with the husband, locate her at Poplar Beach in basically, in an act of suicide with the child, and we were able to save both of them. So if we did have the technology, it would have been in the system showing that she had crossed that point of entry on 92, and she was somewhere within the city limits so we can concentrate on looking for that vehicle on a, you know, be-on-the-lookout type of broadcast to our local units. So those are just some of the examples that I wanted to bring forward. And again, to clear the conversation with the community and also counsel, the intention is to get the site survey done, bring the report back, in between, have some public outreach, and if the council wishes, we can have more public comment, even a town hall in regards to this technology, then I can bring forward the actual fiscal impact and the yearly maintenance cost for the technology, if that's what you wish.
So what threats, if any, are, is NICRIC focused on? Like, is it just routine crimes like auto theft, or are you looking for, you know, terrorists? Or what are the threats that you're really focused on?
Absolutely. So it's, it's everything from terrorism, which we've had multiple instances in this area, where we've had subjects that were planning mass casualty attacks, and those attacks have been averted, to transnational organized crime groups that are trafficking humans, bringing people in, basically modern-day slavery, to, you know, those folks that are bringing in extremely poisonous drugs, including fentanyl, into communities which are killing people. We also focus on kind of major, you know, homicide investigation support, major, you know, arson, rape, robbery, those major crimes that are affecting all of our communities. So a lot of our work is focused on the analysis of trying to find those subjects that are engaged in that criminal activity, using our technology, investigative methods, pulling that all together and supporting all the investigators in the Bay Area with, and I should say, not just the Bay Area, but from Monterey to Del Norte County. We also provide a lot of education to those law enforcement officers. We provide training classes almost every week, everything from how to do investigations properly, to privacy, civil rights, and civil liberties training, to how to use the technology effectively. We also do a lot of work in looking at the infrastructure that we have, those things that we're trying to protect, that are, if vulnerable to the point that if they were attacked, it would affect not only our local area, but may affect the state or the nation. And we do have a lot of those facilities in our region, and we work with those facilities to improve their security, both their, their physical protection as well as their cyber protection. We support local agencies with cyber efforts as well. So we have, we're looking for both nation-state actors, you know, the most popular ones that try to attack our country, along with cyber criminals and folks that are trying to, trying to affect our community in general. So we also have a group of people that do outreach and training that if a major event happens, we do deploy people out to the field. Our big piece is information sharing, and we were really designed and developed after September 11th because of the pitfalls there. And we're designed to be able to make sure that if something horrendous happens in our region, we can get the information to identify that threat, and our goal is to prevent, to mitigate, but we also help with recovery when those events occur. So when we've had mass casualty shootings in this area, we've had major events, our people have been on-site to provide real-time information sharing, not just in our operation, but we have people throughout the country that are dependent on this information flow and may have pieces of information to prevent an attack. And we've had several attacks, in fact, or several planned attacks that never occurred, including one that recently, hopefully, we'll be able to publish soon, but happened in, was being planned here in San Mateo County. We've also had instances where we had an individual that initially was contacted because he, they believed he was a threat to himself, had possession of an AK-47, a fully loaded magazine. He went to prison on that, and when he got out of prison, he was looking for a terrorist group to work for. Fortunately, the terrorist group he found online was the FBI. And the FBI said, hey, we'll help with their cause. He wanted to blow up a building. Initially, he was looking at blowing up the Federal Reserve Bank in San Francisco, decided that was probably too dangerous because they had too many weapons there. that was probably too dangerous because they had too many weapons there, and decided his plot would be to blow up the Bank of America building in Oakland. So he took possession of a device, drove the car to that building, and pushed the button. It did not explode. So he's in prison right now. We have another individual that was planning a mass casualty attack in the Bay Area using fire as a weapon. After weeks of surveillance, no one could figure out what this guy did for a living until they figured out he was stealing credit card numbers and doing major credit card fraud. So they were able to arrest him for that, researched, you know, what he was doing and who he was talking with, and discovered that he was doing a mass casualty plot. He's actually been recently convicted and is serving time in prison. So working cases like that is a big part of what we do, along with those major cases that local agencies are coming across. And our goal is to tie together all those different investigators, not just in our region, across the state and across the country, so that way they can be more effective.
That thorough answer. So I've kind of started thinking, you know, doing, reading through various news articles and literature, that there's kind of, you can kind of distinguish between the police dashboard license plate readers and then these fixed location. Seems to me there's different sets of privacy issues with dashboard readers. It seems like that's the thing that more people are concerned about, and maybe I'm wrong about that. I haven't looked too deeply into it, but is that not the case?
Not really, from the perspective of, the fixed readers do gather a lot more license plates, depending on where they're located at, than the mobile readers. Mobile readers are just wherever an officer happens to be. So if an officer's down an empty street, they're not capturing any plates, but they do show more of kind of where people are. So give the scenario of Redwood City, where the vehicle was parked that was registered in the Central Valley. So if there hadn't been a vehicle, a law enforcement vehicle from Redwood City Police Department with that license plate recognition unit on it, that plate would have never been captured, and they would have never been able to capture or figure out that that car had been frequently packed, parked there over the last, you know, year, to be able to say, let's send a patrol car over there to see if those people are there, and that's how they found them. But having the ability to do that instantaneous read, and I can just give you an example from the city of Piedmont, where they have put, you know, 32 readers around the city, and it's surrounded by Oakland. They had tremendously high crime rate for a upscale city that they are, with armed robberies, burglaries and other issues. So they end up putting those cameras around the city, their crime rate dropped tremendously, and now they're at the point where the moment that a stolen vehicle comes into their city, they're able to stop that within a couple of minutes. When they've had armed robberies that have occurred, when the person's on the phone saying, hey, this is the license plate, they run that plate, found out where that license, or that vehicle had come into the city, figure they're probably going to go out that same way, and have copped those people as they're leaving the city through that same route. So it's, you know, whether you use fixed, fixed readers are very helpful when you're looking for instances where you've got somebody that you go, are they in our community? We're looking for an at-risk person, and this can help you at least say yes or no, as long as there's a license plate in the car.
So is Vigilant allowed to sell access to the data that it stores?
They can only sell data, the license, there's, there's kind of two business models that they have. One is a license plate readers for law enforcement, so that's, that's one part of their business. And Motorola's procured Vigilant. So the other part of their business was that private commercial database, so we're talking about tow trucks and wherever else they can get somebody that'll put an ALPR unit on the, on a vehicle, and those are driving all over the country. So they sell that commercial database to, you know, who, usually it's financial institutions and other folks that are trying to repossess vehicles. That's one of their main market areas. But the law enforcement database is, is for the law enforcement community, and that is something that doesn't move over. So say these readers are, belong to, to a law enforcement organization that's managing it, then those readers, that data is not sold to that private sector community group. So it's only for those folks that are in law enforcement that get that data, and they do have to pay for that data, but it's sold only to the law enforcement community.
This information be subject to the Public Records Act?
So California PRA, and there's a current pending case that it's ACLU versus LA County and City, and the case involves a discussion point that was pushed up all the way. It started out with the lower court, lower court said, no, this is not public records, went up to the appeals court, appeals court said, yeah, we agree with the lower court, went from the appeals court to the California Supreme Court. California Supreme Court reviewed it and said, well, we think there's some aspects of this that should be shared, but we also don't think that people should be, be able to get access to license plate numbers or geospatial location of that data. So we don't know, but we know that's probably a bad idea to share that data, but let's send it back to the lower court so they can try to figure this out. So that's still in the lower courts where they're trying to figure it out. We do not share that information under PRA or FOIA, Freedom of Information Act either, or Public Records Act. So thus far, we haven't had an issue with that. We're still waiting to see what the decision of the court. I don't know if you can't share the license plate number, you can't share the geospatial, exact geospatial location, I don't know what else data I can share. So I'm still waiting for the, for the courts to figure that one out.
Well, I would be concerned that somebody in the public might be looking for, say, a spouse that was trying to escape spousal abuse, for instance. In other words, I'd be worried about violent crime being committed after that data is, you know, secured through a Public Records Act, in other words.
And that's actually California Supreme Court's position as well, that that would, you know, it'd be very harmful potentially for certain members of the public if that were released, and that is the reason that we do not release that information. And even for law enforcement, they have to fill out, and then we have a dropdown that says, what, what, what section under this, under our system are you accessing this for? It's got to be a lawful purpose. So, you know, same rules apply, that you have to have a need-to-know, right-to-know, and that's based on both your position and a law enforcement organization, as well as not just having that position, but within the organization. Doesn't mean any cop can just hop into that system, or law enforcement personnel can get into that system and just search for it for any reason. They've got to have a prescribed reason for that purpose of getting into the system. They also have to have that need-to-know, and without that, they shouldn't be entering the system. And agencies can request an audit, and we do sample audit logs, and we go through the system, we take random periods of the person doing searches, and we send it back to their agency to give it to their supervisors, and have their supervisors verify that, A, they were, had a need and right to know that, use that system, and that it was being used for that lawful purpose.
Okay. I think it would be, you know, helpful at some point in this process to actually see what a scanned image looks like, you know, see the spatial characteristics and what's captured, so you can get a feel for what it is that's being captured and scanned and saved and shared and all that stuff. I think that would be helpful.
Absolutely, and probably the easiest way, because we don't share anything within our database with the public, and that, that includes legislative folks. But if you go to Google, they have some of the images that have been, you know, from commercial databases that people have, you know, put out there, and it does, it's pretty darn accurate. It does show, if you put ALPR images, it shows the, it shows what you would see in one of those captured images, the overall view of the vehicle, and, and usually it's a highlight of that plate, and that's pretty much what's captured in the system. And, and remember that these are capturing a lot of images, high speed, it'll capture an image at 150 miles an hour, because we, we think of it the way of two vehicles going in opposite directions at 75 miles an hour. So it's capturing not the highest quality of image, but high quality enough to give you those characters, and that's really what's aimed for.
I have a couple of comments, not questions. Thank you for a very thorough presentation. I am impressed by your willingness to work hard at some very, very serious issues in today's culture. However, and it's a big however, I don't trust the government, period. I do not trust the courts any longer, and I think it's getting worse, not better. I don't trust technology's ability to protect itself. I believe hacking is as easy as it comes, and I believe that systems like this, once they're in place, are very difficult to get rid of. It's much easier to take a system like this and expand it than it is to contract it. I also don't think that Half Moon Bay is a city with a high enough crime rate to justify the perception that it's possible that ICE could get in here and find our people. We have a huge, a large population that has to register their automobiles in low-income housing here. I can see the possibility that somebody could go in, get a list of all those license plates, and turn them over to ICE. So I'm, you know, it's, it's not your intentions that I have fault with, it's not Saul's intentions that I have fault with. I think you both do great work, but I don't trust the people above you, and I don't see any reason for doing it, so.
Yeah, into the comment section, which were great questions, by the way, I had some of those as well. You know, when I was looking at this up and trying to understand the best I could, I was looking at the hit ratio, you're familiar with the, with the term more or less, which is, you know, and I saw that it, from my perception, it, there were certain places where it was actually seven, eight percent, you know, and then certain places where it was very low, you know, 0.5% or something like that, which is still something. And so the upsides of it, I get, right? It's easy to, to capture people doing bad things. So to me, it's, it's about weighing out the different pieces, right? So it's, it's the, it's the upside of being able to capture the couple of individuals, and we have some instances that we've talked about, versus the, if nothing else, the perception and the, all the things that are associated with, you know, baseless stops, false arrests, all the various things that could happen. And I have seen during some of my reading, I don't know if you want to talk to it, but it, it, there have been times where ICE has gotten a hold of some of the information in the past, as far as I could tell from my research, which might be incorrect, and that does scare me in a community like here as well. So for me personally, I would love to bring this back to the constituents again, because I actually agreed with somebody that, in the, in the audience, and saying that, you know, this information just came to us, and I think we should, because the upside is high, and the downside is also highly questionable, and I'd kind of like to get a better sense of, of my constituency in Half Moon Bay before I move forward with anything from that, so just throwing that out there.
Yeah, I'm agreeing with what I'm hearing. I feel that, you know, here on the coast, we are considered guardians of the coast, guardians of the ocean. And ACLU is one of the guardians of our civil liberties, and I agree with you, I'm an avid soul liberty advocate, might not agree with everything the ACLU does, but I'm glad they're there. And I would really love to hear more discussion within ACLU representative present, so the community can ask questions before we, you know, proceed further, because, you know, they're the experts, they're studying all the issues, and they could relay the concerns, you could talk, you know, respond, people can ask questions, and I think I and the community might feel more comfortable if we take that step, because that's the piece, I think, that might be missing here so far. Because your presentation was terrific, I mean, really, but I also don't want to make decisions just out of fear, you know, rather just more out of, making sure we're all well-educated. So when we make our choices, and there are trade-offs, we can make very well-informed choices.
So I wouldn't mind having some more public outreach around that. I think it would be good to have, we, we do have some local ACLU folks that I think could help educate us on the concept, but here's where I'm coming from. So I try to pay with cash. I don't have a Roomba, because Roombas spy on you. I don't have Alexa or Siri. I don't have a smart TV, I don't have a smart home. I don't want my house spying on me, I don't want my stuff spying on me, but let's face it, our stuff is spying on us, right? The horse is kind of out of the barn. You know, your, your ISP provider, your phone company know where you are, even if you turn off your location on your phone, they can still find out, you know, where you are or where you've been. I believe that the NSA and Homeland Security, regardless of what I do, you know, can easily find out if they don't know, you know, already. I am totally against the surveillance state, I'm totally against technological, you know, eavesdropping, biometric recording, you know, all that stuff. So I'm a, kind of a Luddite, all right? That said, we talked about being guardians of the community. Given that there are license plate readers in numerous other places, our bridges, probably our airports, other communities, you know, surrounding us, I'm sure, you know, our license plates are already captured and scanned someplace, whether you're a citizen or undocumented, that information is already stored, you know, someplace. So I don't believe that you could escape that. And I believe that, given that we are a visitor-serving community where we have crimes of opportunity, and by that I mean like people coming from the East Bay, or from San Jose, or from the outside somewhere, coming over, breaking into cars, taking stuff, going back over the hill, robbing our banks, our jewelry stores, and, and escaping. We have lots of public spaces where people gather, we have, you know, we have beaches, we have some big events like the Pumpkin Festival, where there's the possibility of a mass casualty event. I mean, look at all the stuff that's been happening just recently. You know, again, students at a Denver high school, or middle school, or whatever it was, you know, shot and injured. So I think it's, I think it's good insurance. We're talking about three locations potentially, fixed locations. I think, given the profile of our community, who's here, who comes and goes, makes it an idea worthy of consideration, and I am leaning in that direction. It's a form of insurance. I do want to know about the costs, I want to know where the locations are, what it's going to take to operate and maintain it, and I, I do want us to do some more outreach with the community. But I, I think, given who we are and what happens here, that it's a, that it's a probably worthy investment. I'm willing to pursue it further in terms of getting more information and doing more outreach to the public. I don't want to write it off this evening. I think it's a worthy idea, as much as I don't like it, I think it would help us, so.
I look at this, oh, you, you want to comment?
I just want to say that I absolutely agree that we need community outreach. If the entire community or the majority of people in our community say they want three surveillance cameras for it, I represent them. But I have a feeling we're not going to hear that from the community, and that's not my own personal point of view, so.
I look at this as a cost-benefit analysis. The cost, at the very least, is the cost of pulling fiber and power to at least three locations, and I would much rather have that be for some other purpose. I think there are just too many negative possibilities that really concern me, and they've been enunciated here, hacking of databases, misuse of the information, selling of the information, the possibility of technology creep so that all of a sudden we get facial recognition and AI used. I'm not saying it's going to happen, I'm just saying it could happen. And what is the benefit? Well, from what I've heard, it's very little. There's little, little crime in Half Moon Bay, thank God, and the other communities have license plate readers, and we might as well, you know, take advantage of them. So when I look at the cost and the, and the possible benefits, I come down on the side that it's just not worth it. So I don't support this. So, I don't support this measure. Anyone else? Can I have a motion, please?
I'm still with my previous, I'd actually like to move this item to our next meeting. I'd like to reach out to constituents as a group. I would like to bring back and then see, like we're saying, like, I can go on both sides of this issue, no problem. I see the protection aspects, I appreciate it, I can get it from a police perspective. There can only be upside, right? I mean, generally speaking. From a community perspective, I can see all the downside as well, but I see all the upside, and there are people that care. The big question is, do we weigh privacy higher than we weigh the safety aspects of what this brings to the table? I really need to go out and ask that question, see what I hear, and based on those answers, next week, next time we meet, I'll be ready to move forward with whether or not we kind of go to the next steps or not, but I'm not ready to commit to it yet, personally.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that, you know, when I talk about community outreach, it's just not, it's not just calling some people in my community, it's having a public meeting about it.
Yeah.
That's what I'm talking about, before we make a decision.
I think that's gonna-
So, bringing it to the next council meeting is not going to be helpful.
Well, my, yeah, so my understanding- My understanding is that we could vote on it now, just to get a sense of the locations, how much it would cost, the polling of all the stuff, then we do the community aspect of it. But I mean, I'm okay doing it in a different way, too.
I've heard a motion to table this agenda item, I haven't heard a second. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor of tabling this item to a time uncertain? Aye? Okay.
Aye.
Wait, wait, all right, let's start again. Why don't we have a roll call?
I think Bob wants to say something.
Oh, Bob, go for it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like, I think we'd just like some clarification on the motion, because we didn't hear the motion, but if one was made, I just, we want clarification on what it is. So, I heard you state, Mr. Mayor, that the motion is to table this item to a time uncertain. So, is that what is being voted on?
I didn't make the motion. Councilmember Aysen, so I am clarifying.
So, let's, yeah, so I'd like to continue this item, different from tabling. Or maybe it's not any different, but, well, it doesn't matter. I'd like to continue the item and actually have it be on the agenda again during our next council meeting, same exact topic.
I think that's two, if you're talking about two weeks from now, I don't think that's enough time to get the amount of public input that we'd like, because there are communities here that may have more concerns. I mean, I think, I heard what you said about Piedmont, and I think that's a great success story, but our community might be different from Piedmont. So, we have many constituents here that we want to hear from, and I don't think two weeks might, is going to be, I'm sure it's not going to be enough time to pull together the input we want, so. Newspaper?
Maybe the website could do a poll.
Most of the people in this town might not even be aware that we're talking about this right now, right? So, I mean, we see some stuff on, you know, Nextdoor, et cetera, but, you know, until it really gets out there. And so, I'm not at all ready to write this idea off, I just want to get really more input, get a sense for the community. Everyone brings new information, people are reading different things, and definitely have something, you know, where the ACLU is present to answer questions at all those meetings, would be great.
Should we ask the city manager to suggest a timeline maybe for us, or is that?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I too would be concerned about scheduling it for the next meeting. Not only is it only two weeks, but we already have what looks to be a heavy agenda, we're going into budget approval season. We will have a budget work session on May 21st. We will then bring the recommended budget on the first June meeting, which might carry over to the second June meeting. So, I think the staff is going to be busy with getting you a recommended budget to be approved by the beginning of the fiscal year. I also would agree with the sentiment that was expressed, that a special meeting, call it what you want, a specially noticed meeting, separate from our normal council meeting, might be the appropriate way to provide focus on this item. So, given the scheduling logistics, and given, at least my recommendation, that it should be kind of a focused, I hesitate to call it town hall, but call it whatever you want, it's not a regular council meeting. We would notice it and do all the normal things we do, but I would almost think, at this point, it would have to be, if we get the budget approved at the first June meeting, maybe sometime in late June, when we would have the time to make sure the schedule works for the ACLU rep, get plenty of notice out there, do all the research we need to do, so we can come back and have a reasonable meeting, and get all the input from the public, and get your questions answered. So, June, July, something like that, special meeting.
I'd like to move that we hold a special meeting sometime in the month of June or July, to address this topic, and open it up to the public for their comment, after we've done some work on getting appropriate people here from the ACLU or someplace else, maybe ask Mr. Senna to come back, and Sal to come back, and make a presentation showing the two sides of the issue, maybe the four sides of the issue. That's it.
On my line, a second to it.
Yep.
All in favor of Deborah's motion? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Bob.
The next item is 3C, Half Moon Bay Coastside Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau Funding Request for Fiscal Year 2019-20. Matthew will do the staff report.
Good evening, council. We'll be cognizant of the time that we're at, and the fact that there are other items on this agenda, so I'll try to make this a quick presentation. Hopefully, you've had a chance to read the staff reports. Just quick background, the Chamber of Commerce obviously serves a lot of purposes here in our community, working with local businesses, both, you know, the Main Street businesses, but also the greater business community, and our tour, you know, visitor-serving businesses that bring a lot of revenues to our community. And since 2013, in recognition of that work, the city council has provided funding on an annual basis to the Chamber of Commerce, focused mostly on economic development and business support services. During that time, there's been an increase in tourist and corporate visitors, which increases sales taxes and TOT tax revenues. Obviously, the economy has a big piece in that as well, but I think our chamber's done a lot of great work over the last several years to promote our businesses, and to promote our community, and use the funding that's been provided in the past. Kind of as a basis for this presentation, in the past, the chamber presentation and funding request was a combined report, combined with the Hotel Business Improvement District Annual Report and Funding Request. And I think, based on comments we got from last year's presentation, it led to some confusion about the chamber's role versus the BID role, and how the funding is used between those two groups. And so, what we've decided to do, starting this year, is to really separate those two functions out, as it pertains to the funding requests and reports to the council. So, tonight, you'll be receiving a report from Crystalin Geet, our chamber executive here in Half Moon Bay. She started working here last fall, and has already started to put her stamp on the efforts of the chamber here in the community. She'll be talking specifically about what the Half Moon Bay Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau has been doing, and making a request for funding, and providing details as to what that funding will be used for. The plan is for, at your next meeting on May 21st, to have the Hotel BID Group come and do a presentation and make a request for funding as well. The chamber has a role there, because when the city set up that hotel BID, they designated, obviously with the agreement of the chamber and the BID group, designated the Chamber of Commerce as the administrative support and fiscal agent for that group. So, they take the tax revenues that are collected, or the assessment revenues that are collected by the city, and they work with that group to distribute those funds for different activities that serve them. So, they do have a piece of that, but their primary role, of course, is as the Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau, and that's what we're here to talk about tonight. They have requested $25,000 in fiscal year 2019-20. So, if that funding request tonight is approved, it doesn't allocate, that funding isn't allocated tonight. That'll be a direction to staff to include that funding in the budget, and then council will have another opportunity to actually adopt that funding in the budget going forward. And then, of course, staff will be working with the chamber on a funding agreement, to make sure that that funding is directed towards the activities that you most desire to see it directed towards. So, with that, I'd like to invite Crystalin up to give us a brief presentation on the Chamber of Commerce and the work that they do.
Thank you, Mayor and council, for receiving this report. I truly appreciate it. I'm Crystalin Geet, the newly-minted CEO of the Half Moon Bay Coastside Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau. And the mission of the chamber is to lead collaboration for a successful and sustainable coastide community. When I first came on board in September, I immediately started meeting with members, both of our chamber and the community, and our local associations, and everybody who has a stake in our community, and heard what they were wanting, what they felt could be beefed up, and have really tried to work with our board of directors on making those things a reality. So, some things that the chamber currently works on already, and we are working to bring them to the next level, is our ambassador program, which is a group of local businesses that help mentor businesses that are new to the chamber, that want to become more involved with the community, or want to help their business in one way or another. We help create power partnerships. The ambassadors help them get out in the community at local events, and make sure that those businesses are having their needs met, and help assist the chamber in knowing that what we're doing is helping those businesses. We have an education committee that works with our school district and education-based associations, to make sure that our youth are being taught the skills that they're going to need in the workforce. So, the 2019 goal for the education committee is an internship program between the high school, local high schools, and our local businesses, so that kids can see what they want to do versus what they thought they might want to do, or introduce them to business owners, and get a taste of what the business on the coast side looks like, and help teach them those soft skills. We have a government affairs committee that meets once a month and talks about local legislation on all levels, both local and county and state, just to make sure that things aren't popping up that are going to be harmful to our business community. And then, we have a marketing committee that meets to make sure that the chamber's working on marketing collateral that is the most beneficial to the most of our businesses. So, that's looking at all types of marketing, whether print, or web, or social media, or anything that's out there, because we want to be the best benefit to our businesses, and be a real partner with them in their efforts. So, we try to have all of these different things together. So, our board, which helps guide the chamber, is made up of local businesses. Some of the names you may recognize. We have Ginger Minaletti from Bay World Travel, Janine Minx Kingston from Apublic Services, Nate Sirdy, who is a local realtor with Elaine Pennell, Peggy Milne from Home Helpers, Brian Bodis from Bodis Construction, Dana Dahl from Beach House Hotel, Rob Gino V C from Coastside.net, Heidi Kiper from State Farm, Rita Mansera, who's the executive of Puente, Chris Mickelson, who's a political consultant, Diane Passon from H&amp;B Media, and Brian Shepherd from Shepherd Family Dentistry. So, we really try to have a board that runs the gamut of all types of businesses on our coast side, so that when we are looking at projects and making decisions, they are, we have all different types of point of view. Current projects that we are working on for this year is we moved over to a different due structure. So, it used to be that we treated every business based on their employee size. Well, sometimes that's not really the fairest judge. Somebody could have 20 employees and making it by the skin of their teeth, and there's some other businesses that have one, and they're overflowing. So, we have changed to what's called tier-based dues, which you choose your level of membership based on the benefits provided with that level of membership. This also helps us keep in touch with our members and accountable to our members that whatever it is that we're offering them, that we're holding true to it. We're working on new maps for our different regions of businesses that will benefit from those, so a shopping map, an eat-and-drink map, a where-to-stay map, and an activities map. Those maps were going to be geared both towards locals and residents. They're just handy tools that people can whip out when they want to decide where they're going to dinner, or what it is they're going to do, you know, Wednesday night, when they've got a little bit of time. We're making updates to the website to make it more business-friendly. We have started beefing out the chamber section with a job board, a place for our businesses to put their press releases, and also where they can put their promotions, deals, and savings. People who put their things on the website, we then send it out via our different email communications. We have recently started a second weekly email that is geared towards the community, and any community member can sign up for it, so they get all of that good information. The two biggest projects that we're working on is a business center. This is going to be a place in our office designated for businesses to come and learn about anything that they need to move their business forward, no matter where they're starting from. So, if they just have an idea, we can help them suss out the best path forward, being a business license, county licensing, anything of that nature. If they're having a problem with their business, they can come and sit with us and get some mentoring, and just some general guidance to the best of our ability. In worst-case scenario, if we can't answer the question ourselves, we'll know exactly where to send them. And then, the other part is our program seminars and workshops. We're really working to beef those up for our communities, such as California passed the law that most businesses have to have some kind of sexual harassment training. So, we're working with an organization that will allow us to have local businesses take that training through us, and meet all the California guidelines, and many more that are to come. So, our $25,000 ask is being split into two major things that we feel need the most amount of support to get them off the ground. The first being $10,000 for the program seminars and workshops. So, what the funding for this will help us is really do some in-depth research and development on what it is our community needs. I don't want to make workshops or three-day programs just because I can. I can make a program out of anything, but it's not helpful if nobody needs it. So, we want to make sure that we do these with forethought and intention. Also, to help us hire educators. There will be many workshops, especially, that will be able to utilize local businesses to teach those- to teach those workshops. It's a marketing piece on them, because hopefully that lets their services and expertise get more known. But there are certain workshops that we may require somebody with a higher expertise. As an example, Disneyland is well-known for its customer service program, and it's called Disney Academy. If we were to decide that we wanted to do a Disney Academy in-depth, there's a cost to that. So those are the things that we'll research and develop and apply funding towards educators as we need them. And then also, the Chamber office is small, small but mighty, so there will be some times when we have seminars and workshops that will outgrow our space. Our space holds about 12 people, really elbow-to-elbow. So the second we want anything more than 12 people, our best bet is to either get a room, and sometimes those have a cost. And we'd also love to be able to provide people with meals or small bites and things, if that helps, depending on when they need to be scheduled. If we have to schedule something for five or six, we would love to be able to feed And also the marketing. We would like to work closely with the review in KHMB Radio to buy advertising to promote the workshops, so that it's not just Chamber members that are aware of them, we're reaching the entire business community, so that they can all be a part of it. So some of the workshops that we're currently working on, one that's coming up next week, we are having a CPR workshop. We're working on one about the business law updates that have already started to come through, a leadership training program, a customer service skills workshop, the sexual harassment training to meet the California guidelines, some basic computer software training, so that some people who are not as proficient as they would like to be, or their job is demanding them to be more proficient than they are, we can help get them up there. And then basic marketing tools, SEO, social media marketing, the basics of marketing that people help run their business. The other $15,000 we would like to put towards the development of the business center. Currently, the space that we have for it has a very oddball pony wall that takes up about, I think, 10 square feet of the room and makes it completely unusable, as well as blocking a window that allows that room to be seen from the street. What we would really love is to take that wall out, and then we can, you know, advertise our business programs through that window. People can see it from the street, as well as it making it a lighter space for people to be. It'll also help us get a racking system for the walls, so that we can have the materials to support our services, so all of our different associations can have their brochures, and everything will be on hand, so if somebody's coming in with questions, they can, everything is just very accessible. And then also, it will help aid us with the research and development of the things that should go into that space. Again, I don't like doing things willy-nilly, so I don't want to just put up a rack system and say, "Hey, people, come on in." I'd rather make sure that we are working with the city to make sure that the information that we have there is current, correct, and we are providing what we should be providing. So ideally, the business center will be a hub of activity for the information and tools to help our local businesses grow and succeed. So as I mentioned, the display racking system for showcasing our local business services, all the information on how to start a business in our area, entrepreneurial-type collateral, help from our staff. We're working on a volunteer program to have volunteers in that area as well, problem-solving consulting, mentoring services. And then, some of you may be familiar with a national organization called SCORE, which is an association that helps and provides tools for small businesses. To my knowledge, there's not a SCORE on the coast side, and usually they just need a place to call home, and so we would apply with SCORE to be one of their locations. And then, I'm sure there's 100 other things that we'll think up that can go into that space to help the businesses. If you have any questions, comments, or ideas?
Kristolyn, I am very impressed. Thank you. That was a very thorough presentation, much more information than I was hoping I'd get tonight, so thank you. One of the ideas that you have, and it seems to kind of float through your whole presentation, is to include not just Chamber members, but the entire business community. And I love that idea, because I think that there's been a division for a long time, and I like to see us bringing everybody together, so thank you for your efforts.
Oh, thank you. You'll find inclusion is my favorite word.
Interesting quick questions. I remember SBA used to have a real good mentoring program, where sometimes retired business owners would mentor folks. Is that something you're thinking of possibly, that we hook up with?
So SCORE does this. Yes.
And I'm thinking that in order to reach as many people as possible, you know, you could contract to do a webinar, so people either from their home, or their business, or wherever, can access, versus necessarily bringing people in the room. So I think utilizing technology, I mean, that's how a lot of the government training is done as well, so I think that could really cut down costs and also make everyone available.
So you'll find that technology is my jam. So currently, we are researching a webinar for like the sexual harassment thing, as well as utilizing Google Classroom, so that we can provide the workshops online.
Great. And one last question. When you talked about the mats, will they be mobile phone-ready to use on people's mobile devices?
Yes.
Great. That's it. Thank you. Great presentation.
All right, here we go. So I love the energy you bring to the table, and I love what you've done in the community so far. But the question that I think needs to be asked as a council, and we can get into this, is should taxpayer money be used to fund local chambers? That has to be a question that we ask. We do do it with nonprofits. I believe the Chamber is a nonprofit. There's a part of me that thinks maybe we should include the Chamber in the future as part of the program that we go through with the nonprofits. And then there's the other side where, well, if we help the Chamber, obviously more business could come to Half Moon Bay, and because of that, you know, we all benefit from that side of it as well. But I think the question, I have to at least bring that up, because there are many jurisdictions that do not believe that taxpayer money should be spent on their local chambers, and that entrepreneurs should be funding chambers. And then on the flip side, we have businesses that are in need, in Half Moon Bay in particular. So I'm all for going through it, but I think that in the future, we should add this as part of our grant program, and spell out actually how we're going to use the money from that perspective, and include that in the future. That'd be kind of my perspective on it. What you got?
First of all, our grant program is for nonprofits. I don't believe you're a nonprofit.
So we are a nonprofit, however, we are not a C3. We are a C6.
Not-for-profit, basically.
Yeah, we still fall in the nonprofit categories, but it's just anything that's donated to us cannot be written off as a charitable. It needs to be written off as a business expense.
Okay. So I kind of really liked your question about should we be funding chambers of commerce. I see it as more a question of scale. I think the way we've operated to date is sort of like providing funds to catalyze activities that they're doing, or to maybe help them leverage their funds, seeing it more as a partnership, as opposed to something like providing huge tax subsidies to create a mall, or to attract a sports team, or something like that, right? That I'm totally against. But in this case, I think it's a small-scale investment we make, because we get return in terms of sales tax, and business activity, and thriving downtown, and all that sort of thing. So I'm in favor of the approach that we've taken, you know, mashed with some, you know, reasonable oversight, so we understand what our funds are being used for. So I think it's good, and there may be other innovative things in the future that we want to fund. What I like about this, it's taking a new approach, right? You're coming in and you're doing new innovative things. You're willing to try new ideas in a place that's been kind of, you know, stuck for a long time, still doing good things, you know, working with the lodging industry, generating TOT, which drives our economy. But, you know, you're branching out, and I think that's, you know, refreshing, and I want to support that, so thanks.
Weekends, we don't have that much trouble with. Weekday, little more trouble, and that would then directly fund the TOT, which again is the primary driver of our revenue from. So, I mean, just a way, just a way to look at it in terms of being able to give back to ourselves with taxpayer money as a way to do it.
And I can respond to that, and I think you'll get that request in two weeks. That's always been a request that was accompanied by the bid funding request, is to fund, there's a gentleman that spends several hours a week driving those midweek bookings, which I think has been recognized by the Chamber and the council for years as a great way to promote more TOT and more business downtown.
One last comment. I'm also really glad that you asked that question, Councilmember Eisen. And I think to bridge how we, you know, do the nonprofit grants, one of the things we require is what are some of the metrics of success that you're looking at, halfway, fully? And you're also coming up with some new innovative ideas, which is great, but I think it would be really helpful for us if you can come up with some, you know, metrics that for you would indicate success or return on investment. Some things might work well, maybe not others, but that'll help us and the community understand, you know, the investment. So does that make sense for you? And then it kind of bridges it. Great, great. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Kristolyn. I'm delighted that the Chamber is supporting the Main Street businesses a lot better. I really think that getting them onboard to realize that they have an advocate in you in this business center is really the direction we should be going in, and I congratulate you on that direction, so keep it up.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Half Moon Bay Coastside Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau for your 1920 funding request for economic development and business support activities.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion passes.
Well done.
Thank you, Council. Our next item is a study session on the five-year CAP.
So we'll roll through this. We just wanted to bring this forward in advance of the May 21st study session on the overall budget as just a starting point to look at where we think we are landing, and looking at sort of how we're expending or recommending to expend the funding this year in our CAP. The other piece of this is that we're trying to get a read, at least with the blessing that says this is the list, maximum list that we're going to look at for 1920, so we can go forward to the planning commission for a consistency determination. We can always pare down from that point and move from there, but we would have to go back to the planning commission for general plan consistency determination if we added projects. So that's the, there's a sort of a two pieces. One is a quick preview, and see how this fits in with the overall operating draft budget that's going to come to you on the 21st. And the second piece is we're planning to go on the 14th to the planning commission for general plan consistency determination as required by state law. So with that, we can just really go through, it might be almost to the point of really just getting to the list and see if there's any questions, concerns, or issues. You've had the list in front of you. What we can say is that there aren't significant, really significant changes in this. When we came and talked to you about the accomplishments a few, a couple of months ago now, we talked about sort of the expansion of some programs, one of those being the neighborhood calming, traffic calming program and safety, and so that's something that's out there. We're also looking at, you know, just continuing on with a lot of projects. I think it's important to, and we stole this from Bob, he's left the room, but we stole this mission possible from his CAP from the Park District, so.
Where is it?
All right. Tell him we used it. And so when we get to this, and we know there are some, probably some questions about how we may have categorized certain things, and in terms of whether they're a strategic priority or not, or whether they're, you know, part of the overall council priorities, the bottom line is that we think that everything in this list represents council priorities, whether they're part of the current or past strategic priorities, or whether they're part of other needs, they're there, and they're classified as such. We don't think there's any fat really on this issue in kind of moving forward. So again, we are looking at about 11.9 million total in project for 1920. I'm going to sound like a broken record and tell you once again, as I've said for the last four years, we're overcommitting, struggling to deliver, and, but we are committed to doing what we can to deliver for the community, critical projects, critical improvements, and we'll do the best that we can. And we're doing this with, while doing a lot of other things in the engineering division, as well as in maintenance, as well as in other areas, and supporting other activities. So this is just one of many functions that we do in terms of delivering that. And I appreciate the council's support over the years, and consider any of your comments. And sort of, maybe we want to just leave it at that point and say, "Do you have any questions for us in terms of any of the specifics of the projects listed, or how we've programmed, or suggested they be programmed in?"
I'd like to save you 25 grand for the annual community enhancement program, which I discovered is sort of the offshoot of the flagpole thing. If the council wants to do a community enhancement program, we'll do it, but just, you know, that line item doesn't make a lot of sense.
I like that project. Well, I noticed, looking through all the project sheets, you know, there were some things that are unfunded and pushed off till, you know, the future kind of a thing, but some of those things, I think, could make a difference in the way the community uses some of our public facilities. Like what if we took that $25,000 and purchased those storage lockers at Smithfield, right?
Like, what if we took that $25,000 and purchased those storage lockers at Smithfield, right?
I'm not objecting to any particular item. It's just the way it's lumped together as annual community enhancement program. Give me a specific project, and I'm all for it.
It's called that because initially, it was called Mayor's Choice. People didn't like Mayor's Choice.
I don't like Mayor's Choice.
Okay. How about Community Enhancement Project? You know, like, give me something here, to quote Councilmember Eisen.
Well, I will remind, if I could, to the mayor, that we, that this, that $80,000 of that was, has been programmed from the community enhancement program to do the median enhancements at Highway 1 and Kelly. So at...
It's called finishing the median.
Finishing the median. And that's leveraging local dollars into the project and deal with it. So leaving it as a placeholder doesn't do anything, because you still have to come back taking it out. You can still always come back and add as a project, so it, this is your discretion. It's not necessarily a number-one critical. This is something that, again, the council requested, and I, you know, we've just carried it forward today.
And for the record, and it is on page 158 of your packet, it's 50,000.
Yeah.
It's shown as 50,000. If I'm reading it correctly...
And that's been the annual, the annual commitment since it started.
The crossing from Kelly, that little section that is so dangerous on Kelly...
Right by the school?
Right by the school, right out here.
The district office.
That we have no, that cars come in, and there's no way to press a button to stop anything. You have to go across that little bit, five feet. You walked across it just today. The major intersection at 1.
That's part of the...
Yeah.
I know.
You can put that in there, and that $50,000 can be held in the bank for a long while, for the million dollars plus it'll take to do the actual project. We love the project, and it's in our unfunded list of projects, but that one is just not an easy one.
We don't have to decide on a particular project. We're just giving a placeholder. So do you support a placeholder? Yes?
Yes.
Yes, the answer is yes. I'll take that as a yes. I actually think it's a really well-thought-out document, the way you've prioritized and have the explanations for it, the information in the project sheets. I think it's great, and I don't take issue with your prior prioritization or anything like that. I just wanted to say that, you know, I think we really need to keep in mind that, you know, we have about 10 years or so before climate change is really making a difference in our lives. It's really a much shorter time period than we think it is, and it's 12 years or less. It's closer to 10 years. I think we need to be looking at community solar or other sustainable, we need to get on top of it, right? So it might not be this year or next year's budget, but maybe pieces of it. We start doing a little planning or, you know, making inquiries, but, you know, I'd like to, oh.
Recommended for removal.
Recommended for removal, it says.
What?
For community solar.
Oh, that was more in the intention that we were going towards implementing that for all facilities rather than having it as its own project, but if that's something, we can always incorporate that back into the...
Yes, we see, you know, putting it on our various public buildings and actually having community solar that might, you know, offset some of the cost to people who work and do business here.
Sure.
That's somewhat different. That's like having a, almost like a solar, you know, facility.
So let me say this. We are going to be coming back on the 21st with your strategic priorities, and part of that we've put forth to, into the mix is the sustainability program, and part of that is looking at basically generating solar for our own facilities and buildings as part of that, as part of our thought process of going. And that's kind of where we see the first piece of that. We've done the first step, which is to go 100% renewable in our portfolio. The next step we see, and what we've heard from the council, is we should be looking at, rather than going necessarily, you know, not necessarily going off PCE, but actually generating our own and creating our own, and then we can kind of work from there in terms of whether we can expand that outside of our own rooftops and parking lots and grow from that point. But that's going to be coming back to you on the 21st. I don't think any of that is precluded from being ultimately sort of evaluated and included into the package as we move forward.
I move that we approve the fiscal year 2019-20 capital project list. Authorize staff to present the fiscal year 2019-20 capital project list to the Planning Commission for Finding of General Plan Consistency and authorize the Administrative Services Department to incorporate into the fiscal year 2019-20 capital budget for consideration as part of the city operating budget.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mayor and councilmember, if I could just say, this wasn't about me, this is about Maz and about Jennifer and our office putting this thing together and dealing with it. I just get the luxury of being here and helping present it, so all the credit goes to those two for the work they've done and our finding folks.
My pleasure.
We'd assumed so, but then...
The last item before 11 o'clock is a housing legislative discussion.
I can do it really quick. Do a shortened version. So there were some amendments to SB 50. The most notable is that coastal cities under 50,000 are exempted from the legislation. There is one piece of it that may still be applicable to us, and that is to allow duplexes on single-family lots. Let's see, SB 330 is the one that I think we need to pay more attention to, and right now, there is not a coastal zone exemption, and that would take away basically our Measure D allocations. It would take away any cap on the number of housing units. So we will watch that closely. SB 330. 330, Skinner's bill, yeah. AB 1487 creates HABO, which is a regional entity of the nine Bay Area counties that would be able to add sales tax measures and things like that onto ballots, and then would control issuing money out to counties and especially cities. There's disagreement right now on the makeup. It's proposed to be nine MTC members and nine A-BAG members, but there are some cities that don't feel that's an appropriate representation, so we will probably have a legislative subcommittee meeting so that we can discuss the council's position and send a support if amended. Yeah, yeah, yeah. SB 5 is very similar to AB 11. It's more funding mechanisms, would allow for infrastructure financing districts to issue bonds against future tax increments to fund housing. Yeah. And then, 1486 is the surplus land act, and this, if the city had any land that it designated as surplus, this would give the first right to affordable housing developers, and the projects would have to be 100% affordable. Open space and school zones are protected. And there was a rent control bill that we were watching that is being held in committee. There are two tenant protection bills that we're watching. Those are moving forward. The May budget revised from the governor is going to come out at the end of this week, if not early next week, and that's proposed to include about $2 billion in funds for affordable housing and homelessness. So there's a lot still kind of in the works. Everything's still moving. We are going to have Townsend at your July 16th council meeting to give a better update as things are starting to settle down a little bit. So between now and then, we'll work with the legislative subcommittee on following anything, and we'll update as necessary to the full council.
Jessica, is there any possibility of the city getting SB 5 funds realistically?
I'll have to check on that. I'm not sure.
It's 11 o'clock, so I'd suggest a motion if we want to continue.
I just want to say again, thank you to staff for the emergency preparedness day. I thought it was so incredibly well-done, and it was the right thing to do at the right time, and city staff showed leadership and partnership with others, and I think it was just a very successful event, so thank you.